Got nine o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'll ask everyone to please stand while we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And before that, I'll ask Commissioner Branch to lead us with a word of prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. We thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County. Thank you for everything that you do for us. We thank you for all our known blessings and we thank you for all our unknown blessings. God, lead gotten the reckless this morning on every decision we were to make. Thank you for everything in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery of its champions. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and health and charm.
Like to welcome everyone to this morning's meeting. We have a very long agenda today, so I would like to remind everyone if you want wish to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda. I'd like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less so that we can get through this agenda on a fairly reasonable amount of time. With that being said, we've got approval of the agenda and I think we've got a couple of changes, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, sir. We have two additions under section four. One G under consent agenda, which is some additional paid items for promotional expenses for TDC. And then number thirty-five under section four, request board approval of a maintenance and right-of-way control map.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have one of my constituents here in the audience this morning, Mr. John McKinnney, that would like to address the board on a matter. And if we could maybe insert him on the agenda in like the community development section. I would appreciate it. Got some people here that want to hear what he has to say.
Got a request from Commissioner Peacock to insert, what's his name?
John McKinnney.
McKinnney is in part of community, not part of community development, but after the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion to that effect.
That motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, or none? All those in favor of the motion to modify the agenda along with the changes that Ms. Daniels noted and approved the agenda, please raise their hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. With that being said, we'll go into section number one, which is recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. Ms. Daniels, we've got years of service award.
Yes, I will invite Tim Hamm and Stacy Goodson up first for fifteen years of service. And then as you're called up, if you and your supervisor will just sort of stand to the side, we'll take a group picture at the end. I think you'll just come to the podium and go ahead and present his award to him.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, and we would like to take this time, and this is new to me. I had never been over here recognizing our employees. Y'all bear with me, but anyways, Mr. Timothy Hamm has been with the Jackson County Probation Officer approximately fifteen years. Well, sixteen, correct? He's a wonderful employee and at this time, I would like to recognize him on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. And the certificate says, this certificate is proudly presented to Timothy Hamm for demonstrating the character quality of tolerance and for fifteen years of loyal and dedicated service. Thank you on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Ham, and thank you on behalf of the Jackson County Probation Office.
Tim, hang out just a second and we appreciate you there.
Okay, next we have Dave and Davison. So Chief Bruner will come forward. He's got the next two.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
How you doing?
Good morning. First of all, we have Lieutenant David Davison. We're celebrating his fifteenth year of service with Jackson County Fire Rescue. He started at Jackson County Fire Rescue on April first, two thousand nine. The name Davin has a Hebrew origin meaning beloved. Davin has been married to Katarina for nine years and they have two children. In his spare time, he operates two businesses and enjoys spending time with his family, working out, running, and fishing. David joined Jackson County Fire Rescue after starting his career at the City of Marianna Fire Rescue. He currently holds the position of Lieutenant Paramedic on B shift and is responsible for medical supply logistics. EMT and Chief D's order and maintain all of the medical supplies and medications for our department. The character quality that we selected this year for Lieutenant Davison was endurance versus giving up. And this is the inward strength to withstand stress and do my best. An illustration of this is Davin is a hardworking supervisor who sets the pace for his shift. He is always eager to start the day and always accomplishes every task before the end of the shift, no matter what curve ball comes his way. He completes all truck checks, station checks, station duties, answers calls, and completes and checks his quality assurance reports. He motivates others on his shift and around him every day to do their best and stay busy. Davin's demonstration of endurance each day motivates employees to not give up, no matter how busy the day has gotten. His endurance also serves as a reminder to stay focused and on course of completing my tasks. Davin, thank you for fifteen years of loyalty to our department. We appreciate you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Next, we have James Mike Wiggins.
This is Mike Wiggins. We're celebrating his fifteenth year of continual service with Jackson County Fire Rescue, although he's been around a little bit longer than fifteen years. The name James has the Hebrew meaning one who takes by the heel. Mike has one son Wyatt, who also works in our department as a paramedic firefighter. Mike enjoys spending time with his family and friends, going to the beach and the mountains, fishing and cycling. Mike is celebrating his fifteenth year of service this year as a firefighter EMT. He originally joined Jackson County Fire Rescue under Chief Robbie Brown in June of two thousand. Mike began his career as a firefighter at the Florida State Hospital Fire Department nineteen ninety-nine. This year, Mike celebrated, quote, retiring and entering the drop as he completed his twenty-fifth year of service cumulatively. Mike is a senior firefighter within the department and trains new employees under his wing. The character quality we selected with Mike was initiative versus unresponsiveness. And he recognizing and doing what needs to be done before he is asked to do it. Mike takes the initiative to show leadership in all aspects of his job, from displaying the best customer service to our patients, victims, and their families, to training a new employee, to keeping the lawn manicured, Mike does it all. Recently, during the January ninth tornadoes, Mike took the initiative not only to man the ESF four-nine desk, but he signed in and out everyone over the next three days, keeping vital records for emergency management division. Mike has always lent a hand to cover a shift when a colleague is out sick or a patient needs to be taking long distances. Mike's initiative in our department reaches far beyond his job duties. He takes the initiative all around the station, including train. His initiative reminds me to always pick up the ball and run with it and continue to do what needs to be done, no matter what. Mike, thank you for fifteen years of continual loyal service to our department. We appreciate it.
Next, we have Terry Harden.
Good morning.
My name is Doug Mayo. I'm the County Extension Director and today I get the joy of recognizing Terry Harden for five years of service. She started working for the county on April first of two thousand nineteen. Now Terry is a hardworking woman. In addition to working full-time for the county, she manages the day-to-day operation of an eighty-head cattle ranch, also supports her husband's demolition business, and she makes time for her adult children and grandkids. This lady doesn't spend much time relaxing in the recliner at the end of the day. Terry started working for the extension service as our receptionist in two thousand nineteen. She quickly learned who the resource people were in the county and developed her own directory so she could help people find specific assistance, even if it wasn't something we did. She makes sure every citizens that stopped by or called made the connection with somebody that could help them. She moved up to the serving the Family Consumer Science Program and handled our meeting room reservations. And in June of last year, she was promoted to our office manager. I've decided to recognize Terry for the character trait of initiative versus unresponsiveness. In twenty-eight years, I've never known somebody that had this level of initiative. She recognizes what needs to be done and does it before she's asked to do it. And to illustrate that, she just has a knack for figuring out what needs to be done and developing solutions. She's not one to sit idly by waiting for instructions or directions. She handles all the financial record-keeping for both the county and the University of Florida. And she's filled in for almost every vacant position we've had. Just as an illustration, last year, we had no support for the four-H program, but she was determined that our kids were going to have that opportunity, so she made it happen. It wasn't what was assigned. She just knew this is what needed to be done. But there are many other things that she does to make sure that the extension office has provided excellent service to our citizens. And the bottom line, in five years, she's become a vital member of our team. Terry Harden has been promoted twice in five years because she is a dedicated employee who takes initiative to make our team better. And most of all, she helps people find solutions to make their lives better. Please join with me in congratulating Terry Harden on five years of service.
Congratulations, Terry. Hang out for just a second. Next, we have William Sumner. With Roden Bridge. Jeffrey?
I'm Jeffrey Ressler with Jackson County Roden Bridge. Y'all probably have to bear with me a little bit. I've known this young man for a long time and I'm not used to calling him by his government names. If I call him wrong.
Don't feel bad. I have to look at.
So this is William Sumner. He come to work with the road department, April eighth, two thousand nineteen. We're celebrating the day, five years of service for him. In his spare time, William enjoys hunting, fishing. William is German in origin, meaning Resolute Protector. William was hired as a state inmate supervisor in twenty-one. He was promoted to equipment operator three. The following year, he became an interim equipment operator four, which became permanent the same year. His character quality we chose was obedience versus willfulness. I mean, he cheerfully carrying out the directions and wishes of his authorities. William is another one of our greater operators that is shared between two different districts. He sometimes has to be pulled from his regular route with little to no warning, but he does so willingly and without complaint. And William can be counted on to do what he is told and his supervisors know he can be counted on to complete daily tasks. And with that being said, William, Tiny, we want to thank you for five years of service.
Congratulations. Okay, last but not least, we've got Ms. Peggy Gilli. I saw her out in the audience. Come on up, Peggy.
Yeah, I'm going to actually present Ms. Gilli, but Judy Austin was going to present it, but she is not able to be here today. So Peggy Gilli began working with the county April sixteenth. I believe this is wrong. It says twenty sixteen, but wasn't it twenty nineteen? So we are recognizing her for five years of service. Peggy is a name of Greek and English origin that means pearl. In Greek, Peggy also means child of light, which I think is both very fitting for Ms. Peggy. She has one son and one daughter and a granddaughter, Veda, who has stolen her heart. And I actually have the opportunity of leading Ms. Veda in small group on Sunday mornings, and she is a delight. Peggy and Veda love to go camping together. Peggy enjoys beekeeping and serves as president of the Chipola Beekeepers Association. She also serves at RCC and the Children's Ministry. Peggy moved to Jackson County in March of two thousand eleven. She worked for the City of Marianna and in the aftermath of Hurricane Michael, Peggy came to the EOC to assist staff field calls. She was immediately loved by all and she came to work for Jackson County in two thousand nineteen. She worked at Roden Bridge for a few months, then transferred to the library as children's director and eventually began working for the Soil and Water Conservation District in October of two thousand twenty-one. Peggy personifies the meaning of teamwork. And I will say that in the aftermath of Hurricane Michael, we did all adopt Peggy and pretty well begged her to come work for Jackson County. She has been a true joy. And as such, her character quality that we chose is joyfulness as opposed to self-pity. She is, does not allow unpleasant conditions to control her attitude. Peggy is always upbeat and positive. She exhibits a willingness to step up and assist her coworkers because she enjoys helping other people. She has crossed over and helped ag services on many occasions while they have been short-staffed over the past couple of years. She is currently working in dual capacity during the absence of other soil and water conservation staff. I believe Peggy is a genuinely happy person. I have never seen her when she did not have a smile on her face. Even when she's being told no to something, she is smiling. So the pleasure Peggy gets from the small things in life is inspiring to me and those around her. She's had many obstacles in her personal and professional life, and no matter the circumstances, she remains joyful. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Peggy. I'd like to say on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners that we are certainly very blessed here in the county to have so many wonderful, hardworking, diligent, professional employees. This group that we're recognizing here today is just a part of those, but we certainly are very appreciative of all of the, all that you do for making Jackson County a better place to, a better place to work, a better place to live, a better place to recreate. And I think all of my fellow commissioners would join me in congratulating you on, on your work efforts here in Jackson County. And again, we're very appreciative of your employment here at Jackson County. So thank you very much. Why don't we get a picture right down front if we can? All right, yes, they're exiting the room. We've also have one more recognition to take care of, and that is the Employee of the Month for May two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, Mr. Tim Perry is actually going to present this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have Mr. Matthew Pleasure from Fleet Maintenance. He's been recognized as Employee of the Month for the month of May. He is the one that helps keeps ensuring that our equipment is running smoothly and when something goes down, help make sure we get it up quick. So if y'all have any questions, just you need to call. So now I'm going to read his employee proclamation and it says, whereas the Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Matthew Pleasure began his employment with Jackson County on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and currently serves in the position of Assistant Fleet Service Manager for the Roden Bridge Department. Matthew has been selected as Employee of the Month for May two thousand twenty-four for the standards that he has displayed and the performance of his job duties. And whereas his loyalty and commitment to Jackson County are noticed and admired by his coworkers. Matthew always goes above and beyond his everyday duties to assist the public and coworkers. He comes to work with a can-do attitude and is always willing to handle any task that is presented to him. Whereas Mr. Pleasure provides services to many departments countywide, he always maintains a positive attitude by completing his tasks. He treats everyone with the highest level of respect and makes them all feel comfortable. Due to his positive mindset and attitude, he always gives his best to every task. Now therefore, it being pro-precade that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County Florida commends and congratulates Mr. Matthew Pleasure on his selection as Employee of the Month for May two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Take your picture. I was just going to say, not only is he a good employee, good mechanic, he can sing very well. Very well.
Good children. Thank you, motion.
I move that we approve Matthew Pleasure as Employee of the Month for May two thousand twenty-four and authorize the amount of the check, two hundred dollars, for adoption of property.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, or none? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, under the section number one, which is a board adoption of a right-of-way resolution. Ms. Daniels?
Board of Department of Transportation requests board adoption of a right-of-way resolution that allows DOT to purchase the right-of-way necessary to construct the Peacock Bridge replacement project.
Okay, heard the request.
So move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinnney. Any questions, comments, or none? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That completes section number one. Moving down to public hearings. Section two, we've got a public hearing for board adoption of the ordinance for chapter forty-two of the Jackson County Code of County Ordinances. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, I'll read the ordinance by title. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, amending Article Three, Chapter Forty-two of the Jackson County Code of Ordinances to revise provisions relating to land development regulations, providing for severability, providing for repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close out our regularly scheduled meeting, open up a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Seeing no one in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this ordinance, Fred, is there anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
If there's anyone online that would like to speak for or against this ordinance, they may use the raise hand feature via Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you. With no one in the audience nor online wishing to speak either for or against, we'll close out this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke to Ms. Barnes yesterday about this. There were some slight changes that need to be made. Did we get those done? Even the incorrect words you had in there?
All right, any changes that need to be made have to be approved by the whole board.
Okay. Well, there are a couple of things that need to be minor changes.
Were they substantial or?
No, nothing substantial.
Can those be changed?
It depends.
What, as far as what they are? Can, you want to go over that and see if Michelle can give us an answer on that while we're?
One of them, I'll have to look and find it, was, this has been in there for some time. Amber, you remember where it was about the emit and admit? They use the word admit and they should have added emit.
It was underneath the subdivision regulations. There's section thirty-nine, which is chapter forty-two, section two seventy-nine. I'm not sure what page that is, but it says, no plan or plan of a subdivision of land located within the jurisdiction of the county shall be admitted and it should be emit.
That's not it. Talking about noise.
That was the only one I could find.
No. I'll have to go back and find it. That's one of the minor changes.
Is that?
I would consider that a typo, but.
Yeah, it's nothing substantial.
Can you call me next time you want to do them?
I called Amber.
Yeah, but you didn't call me.
Sure, I'll call, I'll call you. And we also have the name, the word, the definition of caliper. It says on page twenty. Caliper means the diameter of a tree. Caliper is a tool. I think what they mean is the measurement to be taken twelve inches above the sole.
Yes, sir. I did some research on that. It's also used in a word for landscaping and forestry. And it means the caliper is in reference to the diameter of the tree trunk.
I've seen that.
As measured.
I've never, I've never heard it. But I do know caliper is a tool.
It is.
Yeah, okay. I think it's got a dual, one of those words. It's kind of got a dual meaning.
Okay.
Okay. With that being said, is that the only two items that you have?
That's all I'm going to go through. There are other things that need to be changed.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance then.
Have a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
During, if we approve these today, can we go back and change them?
Yes, sir.
We need to go. I mean, is there a time factor in there?
As soon as they're approved, Michelle, is there a time factor that they could change these ordinances after they're approved?
There's a process that you have to go through.
Go through again.
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to get them straight in the beginning.
Well, I just, I've got a lot of calls about the soles on them. Questions about that.
They are almost entirely granted to state regulation.
The most problem that I received was about the noise. Now if we can present to the state.
That was one of the questions I had about it and we discussed it.
The noise generated by the motors of the solar panels tracking or?
No.
That can't be that.
I don't know.
It's the, when you got those inverters out there running, they emit, just like these high tensile lines, you get a humming noise. And there's a lady that lives on Reddick Road, Reddick and Dalewood Cypress. They have gone out and tried to control it by putting rolls of hay around it. That's not the way to do it. You're going to, they're going to have to go out there and build a building and insulate it correctly to control that noise. But that's something we need to look at with these. They could have taken and moved, maybe moved that substation, for lack of a better term, to a different location on the property. They have five hundred and something acres. It's sitting within a couple hundred yards of her house.
Is that something that can be addressed with a development order?
Maybe. To some degree, the solar farms come under and, and the Right to Farm Act and I would need some time to research.
I would think that, you know, with the negotia, whenever we have a solar farm, uh, up for receiving a development, and I'm sure that, uh. Whether it's Gulf Power or some other utility company, that that can be addressed, uh, as the, as part of the development order stage.
Yeah, but if you don't have it in your ordinance and it's not in the statute, they don't have to do it.
I've spoken with FPL about that.
They're, they're aware.
And they're aware of it.
Yeah.
Uh, it's like Commissioner Peacock said, if it wasn't wearing it, there wasn't, but hay bales out there. Uh, of course, they deteriorate with, with the weather and everything.
Yeah, but that, that, they became aware of that problem after it was all built, wasn't it? I mean, it wasn't something that.
Uh, I don't know if that's the only one they have that, that they have a problem with, or they have it in other places. That, that's my concern.
Is, is, uh, is there a problem with the one up at Jacob with that that we're aware of, I've not heard of anything.
How, how those people live to it? Miss it. Ms. Andrew, would you like to speak just?
No, I mean, I'm not prepared to come and speak my head, I'm not prepared to hear what the changes are, and add to that, I'll be glad to be able to come back and do some questions.
Okay, have you ever had any concerns that you?
So currently, we don't have a ordinance for solar farms, um, we can go ahead and approve what we have today so that we do have a working document. And come back and with changes later.
You can amend this ordinance anytime, as many times as you want to. So if there's a specific topic you want staff to do some research on and bring back, they can, that doesn't impact adopting this today at all.
And, and it's a process that we would go through to amend the ordinance.
Just like we did this, we could do it though for a specific topic.
I, I just, I've, I've had calls from, from people who, other than the one that Commissioner, uh, Peacock now speaking of. That lived down the road, they said they could hear it in their house with all the doors, you know, closing. And, uh, it, it just continues. I think that must be crazy.
You want to go ahead and, uh, what's the wishes of the board to adopt the ordinance with an idea of, uh, talking to, uh, uh, the companies that run these and, and, uh. Potentially amend the ordinance to address that?
I have a problem with coming back later, uh, on the next one and amending it if we can, I don't know if we've had that authority or not to do anything about the notice.
You'd have to look at state statute, like she's in, what it says.
Okay. What's wishes of the board, okay? Can we get a motion to approve the, uh, ordinance then?
I did find the word that I was talking about, page fifty-five. Says commercial development without, with outdoor activities which emits sound. Should not exceed seventy decibels from the property.
Which should be emit, I mean, that's fairly obvious, oh, Michelle, do you see any?
No.
That's almost a typo.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can fix that.
With the, uh, with the, uh, interpretation by Board Attorney, uh, that that's more of a typo. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance, got a motion from Mister McKinney. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, as per, uh, the request of Commissioner Peacock, uh, at the conclusion of the public hearing and the adoption of that ordinance, we had someone that wished to speak.
Mister John McKinnon.
Mister John McKinnon, if you would. As I stated previously, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less if you can.
Sir.
If you can, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, we got a long agenda in front of us.
This is why I get started, though, I wanna show you the incident that I'm gonna discuss, that's a picture of a man, he passed away. Then probably died to six months.
And who is that, John? Who is that?
His name is Irving Shade Matthews from, uh, Sinai, he's in Mister Branch's district.
Would you give, state your name and spell it so?
I'm John T. McKinnon, M C K I N N I E. Okay, I'll start out, but anyway, this was a neighbor of mine, own property down there, known him all his life. He was, uh, very disabled, he was crippled in one arm, he was crippled in one leg, some strokes, he had a speech impediment. What happened on Ju- July the fifth of twenty-two, the Sheriff's Department received a nine-one-one call. And it was from a trailer next door, it wasn't from him. And anyway, I talked to the nine-one-one guy and he said that the best system in the world, including our Google. Researched it and, uh, the best system only reaches within fifty meters and. But anyway, they dispatched three officers out there, they went to the wrong trailer, law enforcement's admitted they went to the wrong trailer. And anyway, they beat on the door, they finally woke the old man up. He comes to the door, he's got a yard light, the light in his background from his house, fine, they've got flashlights on him. They bombarded him with questions, where's your girlfriend, where so and so this, that and other? He was confused, he knew nothing about the reason they was there, nothing. And he, but he answered, he was not aggressive, even though in one of the officer's statements that he immediately became aggressive. I watched the video, I just gave you, you know, a copy of all the documentation and the videos. He was not, he sat and answered the question. And finally, he knew nothing about it, he finally tried to go back in, they told him not to, they snatched him out. Even old man's crippled, disabled, slammed him down on the porch. One officer pulled his old crippled arm out and cuffed it behind him. And then, uh, as they were, they had to get him up, they helped him up. When they got him to his feet, he's moving, you've got another officer over here, I can't remember if it was Isabella or Roy, but it's in the video. Tell him you're gonna have to move, I'm gonna hobble your leg, I didn't know what hobble until I looked it up. He gets to the step, I'm gonna drag you down the steps, you don't move. He gets her to the ground, this same officer says, uh, you're gonna have to move or I'm gonna drag you to the car. Well, then, the, uh, officer's statement, he mentioned nothing about this, all he says is he embellished. On, uh, you know, his part of it, the guy was agitated, raising his voice aggressively, pointing. Uh, telling us to clear out, this, that and other, smell odor alcohol, they always gonna smell alcohol. A cop, and, uh, so anyway, and he'd, he'd stumble when he attempted to walk. As if they could not, but it'd take an idiot not to see, when you see the video, that this guy is crippled completely. He's got a speech impediment and two strokes. But they still locked, uh, locked him up, even though they were called twelve to fourteen minutes, according to, I've got the timeline and all on it. Saying that they went to the wrong house. Well, you say, well, why didn't you say something about it, I did, I went to Sheriff Edenfield. He would not return my phone call, so I called him at a ball game. Confronted him about it or approached him about it, all he could. Uh. Anyway, gave me the impression he didn't want to pursue it. And, uh, and I could say it was a mistake, but it was an abuse, it was just, uh, they didn't leave when it was told to, they arrested the wrong individual. Uh, a disabled person, they searched his house, basically illegal under the assumption that because of that nine-one-one call. They could, they had the right to search and, but they went to the wrong house. And nothing's been, these three officers have, as far as I know, nothing has ever been said to them, they've been no internal affairs, they've been, nothing. And I don't have much faith in internal affairs because you investigate yourself. And, uh. Anyway, the cop, it just appeared to me, you know, the law's for thee, uh, not for me, it's for thee. And, uh, I was, because of knowing this old gentleman for years, friends with the family. It, it bothered me all this time, and I said, finally, I'm gonna go to the county commissioners. I'm gonna send a copy of that video to civil rights division, whoever had to, and I know cops have qualified immunity. Well, they don't have qualified immunity under civil rights violations. That's the only thing that they don't have qualified immunity. And, uh, so, and it's no different, you see it all the time, like the Okaloosa, two different times that young man was shot. I saw the video, the gun down, him giving some measure with a hand. And immediately the cop shot him six times according to the news video. You know, just plain murder, and, uh, the jumping, like the same department over here at Okaloosa County, Akron fell on a car, he done loaded an individual up, a young man. He falls on the ground, thinks it's a gunshot, and feels it on a car full of shots. Lucky the kid didn't die that was in the back, and, uh, it's just a thing that, you know, and like I say, I saw no aggression. Out of this individual right here, Irving, saw no aggression, he would answer questions. And finally, he tried to turn to go back in, one of them said, don't go back in the house. He ignored him, so they slammed him down on the porch, pull that old crook, you know, that old crippled one.
Right, right.
And it, it's just.
Mister McKinnon, when, when did, when did this event take place?
It happened July the fifth of, uh, twenty-two, and this, and he, he passed away probably six months later. He, he wasn't educated, he couldn't even write his name, he had to sign a X for me to get permission to get these videos. And, uh, he, he, he's gone, but he's got family, I see some of them, and all that stuff here. That then arrested his, uh, sons and sisters, what have you, that nothingness has never been touched. And like I said, because I've been friends with his mother for years. I'm gonna, I just got sick of it because, uh, as far as I know, Sheriff Edenfield has not pursued it whatsoever, there were three of them. A Deputy Harold, a Deputy Isabella, and a Deputy Roy. And these guys was never, and I, even when I talked to the sheriff, I didn't go in a tone, it was just. Look, you need to give these guys some more training, you need to address it.
Has a, has an internal investigation been done, do we know, I mean, I?
You'd have to ask him because I don't think so, because I haven't, I haven't received anything from him, I think. It was caused the impression he gave me at the ballgame with John, they just made a mistake, he wasn't gonna pursue it. So, uh, you would have to ask sheriff, and that's what I'm asking you guys, since you're my representatives. I'm in Jim Peacock's district.
Okay, well, let, let, I, I think we've got.
And I furnished him a video of the documentation, the nine-one-one call and all the, you know, officer body count. To show you that what I'm telling you is exactly what went on.
I think what needs to happen is, uh, we need to have the sheriff address this formally, I would assume. I mean, it, it, have you, you've seen the video?
Yes.
Is, does it corroborate what Mister McKinnon?
Depiction of it. It, it, and he's, Mister McKinnon's correct. You have to be blind not to realize the old man arm is drawn, when he comes out, it's drawn up and he's hobbling, his leg is. Uh, it's a right or left side, one of his legs, obviously, he's hobbling, you can tell he's impaired.
And also, Mister Donald Rowe, they hurt him, they hurt him to his arm because I checked on him at least twice a week. And after the incident, he was in a lot of pain from that arm and that shoulder, even, I tried my best to get him to go to the doctor, he wouldn't. I think that shoulder was even dislocated. And, but then.
Just to clarify something, so I, I've got kind of an understanding, the nine-one-one call did not originate at, at this house?
And they even tried to maintain it came from that house to cover their own tail.
So they.
But it did not, it was that trailer next door, they know, they know who the individual was. You know, the nine-one-one call and, and so it did not originate from that.
Mister McKinnon, could you provide us the address that the call originated from? What call was, was the address?
Yeah, all the information is in this, and like I said, the call, the call said I beat up my old lady, uh, y'all need to come get me, she won't let me sleep, I think's what it said. And very plain voice, then hung up. They dispatched the three officers out there, they two trailers right together. The, the call came from further over, the next, they just, no investigation, they just got out beaten on, woke this old gentleman up. And immediately when, when he finally come and bomb- bombarded him with questions. Like this embellishment of this officer's statement, as soon as we made contact with him, he appeared to be in an agitated state. I didn't see that in that video, all I seen was him answering a half a dozen questions, no, no, I don't know, I don't have nobody live with me. And you can hardly understand him because of his speech impediment. And it would just let go, that sheriff has let it go all this time, and I went to him. Just expecting, and as a matter of fact, I voted for him and I apologized for that. And, uh, but this officer's embellishment, he would stumble, he's trying to make out like he's drunk because he found a partial bottle of alcohol when he searched the, the house. But it was after midnight, it was after midnight and, uh, June the fifth and, uh. You know, uh, kept telling us, clear out, deputies could also smell odor alcohol emitting from this person. Well, incapable of standing on his own, would stumble when he attempted to walk. It's trying to make, in this embellishment, make you think that he was drunk. No, he wasn't drunk, he was crippled.
Well, Mister McKinnon, I think you, I, I think you've pretty accurately explained, uh, your position on this.
Yes, sir.
Kind of what, what transpired, I guess what I need to know from the commission is, you know, what specific action, uh, do we want to take based on, uh, this, uh, presentation?
Why did we wait this long to bring it up?
I knew that question would come up because of, just like what I said before, Mister Branch, I said that. I had known him all his life and over a period of time. I just, I passed by every day, I've got property joints here, I've got goats back in there that I go feed every day, I checked on him. And I wasn't family, and I did report it to the family, his sister. I even gave her a copy of the stuff and whether it was fear of retaliation from the police department. Or one of her reasons was not to seek a lawyer, not to contact, but like I said, for the sheriff's department, I did report it. And even picked up videos, I reported to the sheriff himself, well, John, they just made a mistake. And like I said, I have no, I have no trust in internal affairs because the investigating itself. I just saw where a chief of police had a hundred and thirty-four complaints against him. Every one of them was, was ruled, uh, unsubstantiated. So people, that's the disconnect between cops, law enforcement, and people. And government don't understand, don't seem to understand that officer's safety stuff, you know, is, is ridiculous. Forty-seven was killed and twenty-three officers, but they also killed twelve hundred and thirty citizens. Two hundred and fifty thousand was injured from, uh, use of force in this country in the year twenty-three. So something needs, something needs to be addressed.
Specific answer.
I, I would suggest that, uh. You or the boards send the sheriff a letter and ask him to come explain.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's obviously, uh, you know, something that can be referred to. The United States Attorney's Office, it's a civil right, possible civil rights violation. They've got an office in Tallahassee, they got one in Pensacola, and the FBI will investigate it.
Michelle, would you?
So that, that was kind of where I was going, um, the sheriff doesn't answer to this board, and so.
He doesn't answer to this board, but all of these people out here that are constituents expect us to represent them, and I think he deserves us. The, the respect to come give us an answer, if he doesn't want to do it, he should come say, I am not going to tell you anything, let it go.
He certainly could have the opportunity to address it.
We afford him the opportunity to come in here, we can't force him, no, absolutely not.
And I did, Carl, I did contact the state attorney, the head one, Larry Bassford, and he said he would look into it. And he did not get back with me, I haven't heard from him. I offered him a copy that I gave Jim Peacock over there of the video and the documentation. And, uh, he said I could get it, you know, of course, state attorney has access to all the videos, what have you. But also, they scheduled him to hear the same individual for August eighth, I believe it was. His sister asked me if I would go help him, I went helped him in the courtroom. And when his name came up and the state's attorney saw what condition he was in. They refused to prosecute because of health reasons, but they also said in the letter of disposition, it said. Even though we had probable cause, well, you didn't have no probable cause, you went to the wrong house, you arrested the wrong man. You abused an old disabled person. You know, you carried, took his freedom away. You locked him in a cage overnight. So you had probable cause. And this all goes back and I wasn't even asking for firing of those officers or anything when I went to Edville. All I asked him, talked about was more training for those officers to recognize people like this. And to address it with these three individuals. And that was what, and that's why y'all are my representing body in this county. I've been a citizen all my life and I'm asking you to pursue it. If y'all don't pursue it, nobody will, but I'm going to follow it to the end or I'll send it to the division of civil rights in Washington, D.C. I'll copy to the attorney general, copy to FDLE if they throw in a trash fine. But I'll be doing my part for reporting this injustice of what went on.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. McKinney.
And thank y'all.
Is, does the board want to direct me to write the sheriff a letter and ask him? Basically make him aware of this complaint and ask him to, uh, a, address us either individually or as a group?
I'll make a motion for that.
Well, it did due to hear his side of it too, you know. Oh, but I think they ought to recognize somebody that's, you know, in that kind of shape. Did not jerk them around. I mean, you know, they, they went there on that call. You know, they don't know what they're going to expect when they're walking in there, you know, so, you know. But at the same time, they're professional enough to see it. He come out, he didn't have anything going to hurt him. But, you know, that's.
Well, I, I'd like to personally see the video myself to just get a sense of what Mr. McKinney is talking about. But you, you've got a motion on the floor to do what?
I would request that you prepare a letter asking the sheriff to come and brief us on this situation. And then we can decide at that point what we're going to do.
Yeah. You got a motion from Mr. Peacock?
What can we do?
Nothing.
No, it's not what I can do.
Well, he, he, he is a constitutional officer, but he deserves, we deserve an answer. So we can explain to people what's going on. The citizens deserve. There are things that can be done. It can be referred, like I said, to the U.S. Attorney's Office. They can conduct an investigation. What can we do? I would like to hear his side of it. If he says no, that's fine. That's his prerogative. He says, I'm not going to do it. That's his option. But.
I don't see what.
We can't force him.
We already know it. They need to take a step further, failing to pursue it until the U.S. Attorney's Office.
What, let me ask you this. What will it hurt for the sheriff to come in here and explain it? And what, he might have done something that we don't know. Training or, you know, he might have also, you know, did some corrective action.
Yeah, I, I don't see why it would hurt to ask him to come and address, uh, address the situation. As Mr. Peacock said, it, he may be able to shed some light on some additional information that we don't know about. That we can at least offer that information, insight to our constituents if we get asked about it. But he certainly has the right to, uh, to refuse to, to come and address it. But you, you've got a motion on the floor.
I did.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock?
That was evident.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That is to authorize me to write a letter just requesting the sheriff to come and just address this issue with us. And certainly would be, uh, based on his, uh, whether he agrees to it or whether he doesn't, then we can go from there. All right. With that, with that being said, moving down to section four, which is reports and requests. I have, trust everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Remember, we did add one item, uh, one G to this. With that being the case, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. We got a motion from Mr. Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two, under reports and requests, is board approval of a grant match for the Campbellton Volunteer Fire Department. Ms. Daniels?
I believe Danny Taylor is here. He may want to present this item.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning. First of all, I'd like to pay thank you to the county commission for allowing me to come before y'all. Secondly, I'd like.
If you don't mind, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Danny Taylor.
Yes.
Uh, chief of Campbellton Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, I'd like to thank the commission for including this provision in the budget to allow for, for this match. I'm from Campbell, which is the smallest municipality in the county that supports the fire department. And this money, seventy-five hundred dollars, but it allows us to do some things we might not otherwise do. And as we try to get some of the necessary equipment we need. I know Chief Brunner hits you with some stuff that you get sticker shots from. When that radio was bought, it cost eight hundred dollars. Right now it's fifteen hundred. And the only reason it's fifteen hundred is because Motorola has a contract with the state that they'll sell them in the state for fifteen hundred dollars. So, um, we requested from Forest Service, and here's the, the approval. Uh, for fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, which was approved. And their match share is seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. So I have a letter here. Uh. The Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, Campbellton Volunteer Fire Department, request seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars from set aside matching funds. To a match approved, seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen from Forest Street Department. Uh, and I'm also providing a copy of the approval letter. So I do make a request that the, uh, the county, uh, you know, approves the match, seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars.
You heard the request and this is for thermal, uh, thermal imaging camera, hose, nozzle, radios, and air bottles and cones.
I move we approve the grant match fund.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions of the chief while we got him here? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thank you for your work up in Campbellton.
People say.
I've got this letter and this approval from Forest Service. Whom do I need to turn that in to?
Clay.
Uh, thank you. And speaking of Campbellton, Mr. Donovan may not know it, but his father or grandfather designed the post office and some other, other stuff in Campbellton.
I was, I was aware of that. It's been a good building.
It stood, part of the roof got peeled off with the building.
Yep. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What will I need to do? Be in contact with, uh, finance?
Yeah. How will the check be issued, Clay?
Put it down the next cycle. We'll go ahead and process it and, uh, we can mail it to you or we can call you.
That can be sent in and let it go to the town of Campbellton for whatever way the county uses it.
We usually mail it.
Okay.
Should have it pretty quickly then.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down the agenda. Item number three is board approval of a nine-one-one grant for priority dispatch protocol software.
Yes, uh, come on up, Dan.
Good morning, Daniel.
Uh, yeah, so this is a grant for additional software licenses and yearly maintenance for our priority dispatch system for seventy-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Okay. So with the explanation, read the report. You'll entertain a motion?
I've got a question.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Branch and a question from Commissioner Peacock.
On the, the performance standards of this grant. Says complete all work to, uh, complete quality assurance, software priority dispatch system. Maintenance, automated call taking software, add three positions. Are we having to add positions to our dispatch? What is that?
Three software licenses for additional positions. For the, for existing positions.
We already have the positions and.
Yeah, we have, we have the consoles and nine-one-one positions, but we don't have the software licenses to support on those positions.
I'll second his motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch.
How long the license, how long the license? One year?
They're, they're yearly renewed.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, moving down the agenda, board approval for a purchase of a backup server and storage for the Jackson County Correction Institute facility. Ms. Daniels?
This is for the purchase of a new backup server licenses and cloud backup storage for Jackson County Correctional Facility. The online cloud storage is a recurring charge of eight hundred dollars per month. And this will come from fine and forfeiture contingency.
That's both the, uh, the, the software, uh, the leasing and, and the cost for the software as well. Yeah.
Didn't we just spend a bunch of money on that system out there?
Yes, we have, but, and Fred can speak if y'all have detailed questions. But this is the additional things that have been identified to get them up to standard with FDLE.
Any other questions?
I, one other question. Was this budgeted?
It was not budgeted, but there's an, uh, item later in the agenda to do a budget amendment to move this money from contingency into that line item.
Yeah. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch. Second, did you second that?
Yeah.
Or second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five is solicit bids for Ag, Ag Center equipment upgrades. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request for board approval to go out the bid to purchase equipment upgrades for the Ag Center. Um, the request is to not to exceed forty thousand dollars in TDC reserves. But this will come back before you actually award, uh, the final bidder.
So movement, Mr. Branch, second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Uh, the list of, uh, equipment was generated. I asked this at the TDC meeting last night. It was generated by Chris. Uh, he feels pretty confident that's all, uh, necessary equipment to help us, uh, move forward with, uh, increasing the usage of that facility.
We definitely need to do that.
Yeah.
We're also working with Commissioner Branch. We're going to meet out there with several of us on Thursday, um, to kind of finalize exactly what we're.
Going to be bidding?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. That motion also carries unanimously. Item number six, uh, board approval of a TDC Visit Florida Video Co-op. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request for board approval to purchase two slots and visit Florida's Video Co-op campaign in the amount of six thousand dollars and was approved by the TDC.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, uh, board approval of an application format for certi- a certificate of public convenience and necessity. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, so Chief Brunner was approached by, which company is it, Chief? Survival Flight, um, requesting to have a certificate of need issued. Um, this is not in any way to push out Air Hard or anything like that, to, to have an additional, uh, coverage in the area. However, legal reviewed it and said, we need an application process. So today, all we're asking for is for you all to approve the application. They will then apply and then you all will review it again to determine if you will in fact issue a certificate of need for them to have additional service in the county.
So, so this board makes the decision as to whether to issue the certificate?
That's right. But today it's just the application.
And who does the application go through?
It'll go through Chief Brunner, um, but it'll be put on the agenda for you all to review if you are going to approve.
Is there someone wanting to come in and replace Air Hard?
Not replace, supplement.
Supplement.
So when Air Hard is not available, they have a mechanical issue and Chief, feel free to add anything on this.
Is that a problem?
No, so, uh, I mean, Shanice here pulled out of County Airport. It's a problem like with separate company that leased that space at County Airport. And they are the second caller. So we, and that's terrible. All, uh, your average occupancy, uh, month, additional. Uh, needed on the down. Or section, uh, they would be second caller.
Oh. Okay.
How long has Air Hard operated in January, over the year?
I make a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Um, item number eight, a board approval of a M, uh, memorandum agreement between the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and Pan Care. Ms. Daniels?
Um, if we could just pause, Carrie Eaton had her hand raised on item number five and I don't think that we recognized it. She wanted to make a comment on that.
Okay, Carrie, are you online?
I am. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. How are you?
Good. I just want to address the, um, the, the Ag Center situation. I did, you know, have spoken to you.
Just a second. Can we, can we get a little bit more volume so we can hear? Fred?
Is that better? Is that better?
Little bit. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I've spoken to a couple of commissioners in regards to the stance of the Ag Center. Um, I absolutely support the partnership with the, uh, TDC to help to improve some of the facilities. Um, some of the questions that I had that I'm hoping can be addressed were, um, at our last event that the TD, TDC helped to sponsor. We had a situation where there was improper billing to the original people, um, overpricing them. Um, we also had a situation that when we had them all out there, we had twenty-plus families that were without power. Because the circuits couldn't handle the power of the capacity and we were not even at full capacity there. Um, so I guess my question is, is if we are trying to buy equipment to increase, uh, revenue and to increase partnership and to increase out-of-town visitors. Where are we with the county side of addressing those needed repairs as well as other cosmetic things? Such as barn doors that actually close, horse stables that actually function, that kind of stuff. Um, I just would like us to keep that in mind as we're looking for more equipment to be added. That we are also doing the due diligence that when we get those people there, they have a good experience there. That all the things are working. Um.
Of course, Carrie, you were not at the TDC meeting last night.
Yes, sir.
That was discussed briefly if I, I understood and heard you correctly. Uh, that there are some capital improvement needs out there that do need to be addressed. Commissioner Branch may know a little bit more about that, but I do understand that we're looking into that.
Yes, they, they did have some, some problems with the power out there and I think, I don't know how long it's been since they had that many people hooked on out there.
Never.
That's what I figured, never.
Right. And that's the concern is that we are able to actually house more, almost doubly more than was even out there. And if we're not even able to handle it at a seventy-trailer capacity, how can we actually house it where we have every flip included? And so I just want to make sure that, you know, the number of phone calls that I got, you know, over the weekend in regards to barn doors not being properly closed, um, and, and some mismanagement. I mean, I know this isn't my position, but I feel like it's important that we have the right people out there doing their diligence in, you know, working with the public, making sure that there is oversight there and that people who want to come are, are reaching someone at the office that wants them to come just like we all do. Um, that facility is an incredible facility. It is one of, a, a huge asset in this county that could drive economic impact across many, many areas. Um, and some major attention needs to be focused there on how it's being run and what it's going to take to run it properly. Um, I am going to be there on Thursday, I hope, with Will Ann as long as, and some of the other people to address the, uh, materials and the equipment that we have out there. Um, but I, you know, I have understood there, there's been conversation, um, by the manager that some of our products out there. Um, but I, you know, I have understood there, there's been conversation um, by the manager that some of our products out there, some of our gates and things were going to be donated. And I just really hope that, you know, the county commissioners can be on board with us, that nothing needs to leave that facility that could generate revenue to meet us in the gap of this financially and that we worked, mhm.
Alright, thank you, Carrie, I know that Commissioner Branch plans on being out there Thursday. And I know that these are some issues that the county commission is aware of and looking to
Great.
Uh, make some uh, improvements out there so that that facility can reach its full potential.
I think the request was for uh, something to do with rodeoing and that roping.
It does.
Lot of people uh, will come to horse shows and cow shows and that type stuff. So uh, don't focus on just one thing.
Right.
Focus on getting the equipment for everything.
I think that it needs to be the equipment for everything, I just think that I'm hoping after an assessment on Thursday, we can see what we already have to start with. You know, and and make some gains financially back to see and then address parts, what we don't have, what we need and what we may want are not all in the same. And to be financially responsible for the dollars that are coming through the TDC. Um, and and the strategic plans and the capital projects that we have in play, that's all I'm asking, but I do appreciate you listening, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. How many campers did y'all have out there, Rhett, did we know?
Um, I believe it was close to eighty, and we had over a hundred horse stalls booked, it was the largest event we've ever had.
So.
It was sixty-three.
Didn't have enough power to supply, or is it hookups?
No, ev- every hookup, so it's a combination of thirty and fifty amp connections and Carrie, I'm, I must have missed it, you said twenty people without, I I got a call like ten o'clock one night that one breaker was out, one camper or one horse trailer or whatever was having issues, we got it repaired that night, as far as I know. And um, it came back to the the panel itself, they gave some word and that's been repaired and we have extra materials on site now in case it happens again, so.
Uh, and I can't speak on that, Rhett, that was just given to me by the people putting on the show, that they were almost twenty and that they actually weren't even billed for those people staying there because of that, so again, I I will be very candid that that is hearsay from the people who were involved with that. Um, so I don't know, but my understanding is they were sixty-three that were there um, in total. So hopefully on Thursday, when we all meet, that um, there, I know Kim DeFelix has been asked to have a more solidified number, um, as well as some information that I did not feel I could share because it is hearsay and I'd rather, I don't like to speak on someone else. Um, but hopefully we'll have some more answers on Thursday and how we can all work together to make this the greatest facility in the southeast, for sure.
Well, maybe we need to talk to the power company, make sure they got enough power coming in.
We did that too, I mean, we we fixed that problem already.
It, that's taken, okay.
Okay, very good, so let's let's go ahead and jump down to item number eight, uh, which is memorandum of agreement between uh, uh, you know, Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and Pan Care, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, so this is for our community care medicine program, uh, it's a no cost agreement and memorandum of agreement between us and Pan Care that um, win this uh, position, which Johnny Padgett did today, I'll introduce him a little later, but he is, he is the program, right, Don? Um, and so he's been working with all these different agencies to say, uh, to make these connections. And uh, this is one example, so when he identifies a need in the community that needs additional healthcare, um, whatever that may be that may be utilizing the ambulance for things that we don't really want them to, he'll make those connections, Pan Care, no cost agreement, just saying this is the arrangement we have.
Okay, very good, thank you for that explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Uh, item number nine, I think this is exactly the same thing, but with the Jackson Hospital. Chair will entertain a motion, Commissioner Crutchfield got a motions, a second from Commissioner Peacock, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, that motion also carries unanimously, item number ten, moving down the agenda is uh, board acceptance of the Florida Department of Health High Performance Resuscitation Training Grant for Fire Rescue, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is a one hundred percent grant, you know, it's asking for acceptance.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven is board approval to purchase the high performance resuscitation equipment for metal lines group, Ms. Daniels.
Total cost fifty-four thousand six hundred and then one hundred percent covered by the grant.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Concerning the equipment, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion also carries unanimously. Item number twelve, board approval for uh, REV Technical Center to repair damage to fire engine following a slight mishap, Ms. Daniels.
This is a sole source situation, um, the amount is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-three cents. This was covered by insurance, but asking for board approval to repair the damage.
This will be done, excuse me, in Ocala.
Correct.
According to explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in.
Is the insurance coming to that?
Yeah, insurance is covering it, totally.
Problem, how long would it be out of service, Charlie, you know?
Okay, and you'll actually drive, uh, we'll have our own personnel drive it down there and and leave it and then. Good, okay, very good, thank you, for the explanation. Alright, got a motion in a second, any other questions, hearing none, all those in favor of the motions, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, that motion also carries unanimously, item number thirteen, moving down the agenda. Board approval of the DRMP Task Work Order, Ms. Daniels.
This is, uh, DRMP is recommending adding a geotechnical firm to provide pavement exploration and evaluation on Consville Road for FDOT Scott Grant Project. This is not a grant funded uh, initiative, but we do recommend that we pursue it in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for road construction funds.
This is for Arvin to do the geotech.
Yes.
So there a problem with the base on that road?
Potentially, Jeffrey, you want to answer that, or?
Yeah, that's uh, that's a road, I think, past year or the year before, uh, it's part of the big patch project and it's packed several, uh, there are several places on it, it's already mashed out, it's it's a problem, so we know there's a problem in base and we were just trying to get ahead of the pain and make sure when it's ready, we'll rebuild that.
This will provide, this will provide additional information, hopefully will will hit us in the right direction.
Are they going boards and everything?
They'll do course and then this will also keep Arvin engaged throughout the duration of the project, in case any additional things.
So they'll be able to to make recommendations based on what they see in the soil borings.
That's right.
Okay.
So it wasn't, what, a couple of years ago, we had that?
Not even, it wasn't even two years ago, was it? Okay, you heard the recommendation.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner Peacock, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, that's sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, uh, this is uh, board approval of spring chase emergency repair closeout documents, closeout and final app pay application, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, um, on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, the board approved this and now the work is complete and requesting that we close it out.
No more, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, I saw the paving, the paving turned out real well, I think uh, everyone out there is very happy to have that done. Uh, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number sixteen, board approval of a MOU with the Economic Development Committee of Leasing uh, Employees, Ms. Daniels.
We skipped over number fifteen.
I'm sorry, number fifteen, board directions on Seminole Drive, I I skipped over that on purpose, Commissioner Peacock.
Well, I thought it probably is, but I wasn't gonna let you get away with it.
Uh, board direction on Seminole Drive Paving Project, Ms. Daniels.
So we were directed at the last meeting to bring back more information on this, I'm gonna ask Rhett to sort of walk through the three options that were identified.
So we took the opportunity to go out with Rodenbridge staff and we did a couple of test digs to see what kind of base we had to work with and um, we're not happy with what we found, so the original approval was to do uh, incident half overlay on the existing roadway. Um, but after us being out there, uh, communicating with the contractor as well as the um, consulting engineers, we just aren't comfortable with that, um, to put that kind of money down. Um, so um, we did the exploratory digs, we gave some of that information back to all they howl and then they put together what they feel like are uh, more long-term solutions for this roadway. And you should have those in your packet, but essentially the three options are for one, two, do a uh, I'm trying to pull it up here, sorry.
It's a resurfacing with minor reconstruction.
Right.
Which is a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Option two is a full depth reclamation with resurfacing, a hundred and sixty-four thousand thirty-seven dollars. Or option three, full reconstruction, two hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and seven dollars.
So obviously, it escalates in price, but um, overall, we feel pretty comfortable. Um, if we can wait till the end of the construction, our biggest concern is the the traffic, the heavy traffic going in and out is, you know, part of the water and sewer extensions and the roadwork and all that sort of stuff, so I'm I'm comfortable with option one, which is the cheapest, if we can push it towards the end of the project and it's all that heavy equipment is done and then we can resurface Seminole on the way out. Um, if we want to do something a little quicker, feel like option two would be the best and it would just be more ready to hold up the additional equipment, I mean, we're estimating you know, we're still at least five to six years of construction as far as the infrastructure, the water and sewer infrastructure. Um, I think at this point for that section of road and no more uh, heavy traffic long term than we're gonna have, option three is um, not feasible, but this is just some some options that we were able to put together and bring back to you guys.
So so for option one, we're, yeah, as far as when all of that construction traffic would be off of that section of road, you're looking at five or six years?
Uh, yes, sir.
Sure.
That's not acceptable.
Yeah, I'll, we'll take.
That road lasts that long.
And the and the reason I say that is because option one is just to cut out and build back up the areas that are currently failing, but there's also an app in your packet of, you can see from when they first started the project to now, how much more deterioration we've seen. Um, so my concern there is if we're gonna just, you know, patch the areas that are failing now and not correct the base as a whole then you're gonna start to see those issues come back up similar to Consville I would deal with right now.
So.
Whereas, go ahead.
What did you find when you did your digging?
Just um, um, ho- clay, basically.
Well, most of the roads in Jackson County are built on clay.
And most of them are from.
But most of them have a significant base on top of that clay.
That's right.
No, no, no.
Um.
Damn.
A lot of, any of the new, any of the new roads, we should, yeah, come on up, Eric, if you don't mind, state your name for the record, please.
Here, we're in the public here, um, I just wanted to present some stuff to, uh, in a sense, it's a good, it sounds like Rhett said. Realize that a lot of the problems are a result of all that equipment, I mean, front end loaders, which are um, light load vehicles, no, they're on platters and everything like that. And then equipment, uh, don't trust everything else coming in on those steep slopes, breaking as they're coming down and kind of pushing it all down too, I think is a good bit of a problem. There was pipe clay, it's all under it, so we don't recommend this going to be, you know, I mean, it can six months, maybe it's all the hell. Um, so since we put that together for them, I've reached out a bunch of different other avenues. Uh, the Water Management District, actually DDP on the Springs Grants, we now request additional funding through their portal. Whereas before, it was just part of the multi-year program. Um, and so what I'm gonna do is, any day that portal could open and we're gonna present that to them as the end result of all construction activities um, associated with the Springs Grant Sewer Construction, and so we're trying to get additional money through that avenue. We'd know probably in November, when, you know, just verbal, you know, awards, notifications. Um, so that'd be the nearest with that avenue, initially I was talking to some of the people on the County Transportation Safety Board, five months, seven months, there's been challenges, one that I've reached out to them yet, but Commissioner Peacock's been requesting them to try and get that intersection of the new Springs End Signal to be more of a T intersection instead of that Y where people are off tracking onto the the residential lot and there's the little dungies that are trying to keep traffic separation there and that, or maybe we can use some safety improvement funds to get that intersection improved a little bit as well. So that's just something that I want to present, you know, so it's not like, I've also been gonna come up with two hundred thousand dollars in funds or constantly trying to find other avenues to fund it, and I think that now, you know, we've seen after just a couple of years of construction now, and in the Springs that we can, you know, actually get funding through that Springs Protection.
You're thinking as as quickly as November, we may have an answer as to whether we can get additional dollars?
That's right.
To fund one of these options?
That's right, I mean, that's a little bit more of some, more of a normal change order for us to um, for us to go after, you know, I mean, it was loaded button on it, so we did that, the additional, master additional funding through the Springs Transport Portal. But that's kind of been one of.
You you think the chances are pretty good of of, I mean, fifty, fifty?
This is the first year that we don't get to just update the multi-year amount requested and that we do actually, we're, so therefore we're just gonna get funded what was on the multi-year engineer's opinion probable cost. Um, and then any additional funds, now we actually go through the Springs Grant Portal through the DEP website. And I haven't received any money or we haven't done this, so this is gonna be a guinea pig this year, so to speak. Um, but I do feel like it sounds pretty good, you know, that I'll still probably have additional time.
I don't mind going after the money through uh, this program, this grant. I just, five years is not acceptable to me, because I don't.
You're not talking, you're not talking that.
No, no, I mean, if we do a full blown reconstruction like what we think is gonna be the best with, you know, two and a half inches of asphalt on it that it would be traffic rated for some of that heavier equipment and everything.
And you'd be putting that asphalt on top of a a good base as well, limestone.
That's right, that's right.
So what are you gonna do with the pipe clay that's under it?
Well, completely remove twenty-two to twenty-four inches from the proposed finish grade. Something else I'd like to point out is um, the guardrails that are along there are not in compliance with state or federal standard. So I mean, to just go in and do an overlay, you're now bringing it up another inch above you know, what the requirement is for the height of the guardrails and everything. Um, so you gotta be careful with some of that for liability reasons, I mean, if you aren't changing the elevation then obviously you aren't making it any more of a safety hazard, but if you do start raising or possibly lowering the elevation of it, then you probably need to address those guardrails as well.
Well, to me, it would seem like it would be prudent for us to to wait another two, three, four, five months and be able to do really what is the best solution, which is option number three, and get that road fixed.
Are you, are you, is, are you saying option three, or you?
Uh, that's what we're requesting.
Is that what you're gonna put into grant?
That's what we'd request from before, correct.
That would be the longest.
And probably just going ahead and improving.
I mean, we can always fall back to another option.
If we don't get it.
And go to the bad places and just dig out the pipe clay. I assume that's what y'all saw, was pipe clay?
Correct.
Or red clay, which one?
It was the gray pipe clay.
A lot of it?
I I didn't see out there, you know, but I saw a picture, I didn't sit there and watch all of it, but.
Four foot deep, six foot wide.
Was it, was it?
All pipe clay, so.
I mean, I, was it, was it ever analyzed? I mean, was it expansive clay, I mean, is that just based on a a visual inspection and it's not really ever sent to a lab or anything?
No, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it, I think that's the best direction is to basically authorize all eight.
I'll, I'll go after the grant, the form, option three.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, and then all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, thank you, Eric. Um, okay, let's go to item number sixteen now, which is uh, board approval of a MOU with uh, the Economic Development Committee. with the Economic Development Committee for leasing employees, Miss Daniels.
So I've been working with the Economic Development Committee on this arrangement. So much like we have with Endeavor Forward to lease the Next Step employees, we are proposing to do this with Endeavor, I mean, with economic development, so that they have a more competitive package to offer to the next director.
With, with Jackson County Board of County Commissioners being probably the, the primary contributing financial partner with them, are we prepared to, is it out there as far as who they've hired yet?
Not officially, but they do have someone that they've offered the position to, just waiting on this, and then that'll be in place.
So wait a minute, explain to me what we're doing here.
So just like with Tammy Dasher, we actually would hire the Economic Development Director as a county employee, and then we lease that employment to the Economic Development Committee. That's the arrangement we have with Endeavor Forward.
It has no really economic impact on us.
No, it doesn't. The benefit that it has is they can offer FRS insurance. It makes it a much more competitive position for the Economic Development Committee.
And is that what we had in the past?
No.
No.
They would simply.
My understanding.
Independent contract.
My understanding, with my discussions with JC EDC, is that this was one of the components that was able to attract this one particular person to that position.
That's correct.
So, or how much control are we going to have?
We don't. We lease them to them and they report to that board. It's just like it was. Really, the main function is they're able to offer them FRS and good insurance and some of the other benefits that we offer.
And again, we are, again, the major financial contributor to that.
Oh, sure.
And I sit on that board and those kinds of things, but this is just for the employment aspect.
Michelle, is there any legal liabilities for the board?
Sure. I mean, the person will be considered your employee, so you'll be responsible from that standpoint. But you've done this before, like, like you said, with Next Step, we've done this with Flix.
Yeah, but we got out of both of them, didn't we?
Not, not.
No, we still use them.
I thought we got out of Next Step. Oh, and the Flix we did, didn't we?
The Flix we do. So we have another arrangement like this, which is the Flix office.
Maybe it was their health insurance we were paying or something.
Okay, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement.
Sure.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner McKinney, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, that, uh, that motion carries unanimously. Item number seventeen, moving down the agenda, is board approval of a budget amendment on the fine and forfeiture contingencies for the purchase of IT equipment, Miss Daniels.
So this is in reference to the previous action you all took. So we're just asking for a budget amendment to move nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to the fine and forfeiture, out of the fine and forfeiture contingent.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number eighteen is board approval to award the twenty-three, twenty-four dash seventeen Rift Project Jaws, this is the engineering and design to David H. Melvin.
Yes, we had one response recommending to approve.
Don't move.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen, this is board approval to set a ranking committee for the Great Oaks concessionaire. This is a rebid, Miss Daniels?
Yes, just looking for the board to set the ranking committee for this item.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the board do the ranking.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to name the board as the ranking committee. Second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty is similar. Uh, this is board approval to set a ranking committee for the TDC Strategic Plan Rebid. We had, this is, we already had a committee that was set up and we're going through a, a rebid of that.
Yes, so we're asking for direction on if you want the same committee, different committee. I know Carrie Eaton reached out to a couple of you, asking to be considered to be on the ranking committee, so just looking for board direction.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we assign this to the board of county commissioners.
Well, before we take action on that, I'd like to see the same committee set up. I mean, I'd, I'd like to have.
Well, we had problems.
Yeah, but we've, we've gotten, we've gotten some clarification on that and I don't think we'll have the same problems this time.
Well, that's my motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Does for lack of a second, Chair, entertain a motion to approve the same committee with Carrie Eaton serving on there.
You can't make motions. You don't make motions.
No, I'm asking for a motion.
So the option is to either leave it the way it was with the board and Kelsey, or to add Carrie Eaton in addition.
What is the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To same, same committee. Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield to approve the same ranking committee as, uh, was previously set. Got a second from Commissioner Branch, I saw a nod of the head. Okay, got a second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
No.
Oh, excuse me, the motion carries four to one with Commissioner Peacock voting no. Thank you. Item number twenty-one is board approval of Amendment One. Uh, this is a, a community paramedicine program, Miss Daniels.
So this is a agreement that you all previously approved, but they sent it back on page four nineteen. It previously had different dates under number three. They changed the dates from October one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So they're changing this with all of their contracts across the region, so we just need to make that amendment.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman, with the amendment, second.
Is, uh, I, I didn't really even look at this. Michelle, would this, my wife works for Big Ben, I mean, that, that would not be a conflict in that first, would it? If it is, I don't mind abstaining just for.
I forget what we're doing with them, with the D, kind of student care medicine program, the opioid settlement funding. So we're funding them? No, they're sending us the money. The contract is with them.
They're just modifying the contract dates, right? Nothing changed with the dates. Yeah.
I would say no.
Okay.
There's no benefit to it.
Get your, entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, question from Commissioner Branch?
We have a motion.
We already did?
Can't, can't pick up.
Okay, sorry.
I have a question about this. This, the amount of money here that, that we're getting for that, we've only spent by half of the front.
Sarah actually almost has that complete to show you exactly where we stand.
Can that information be individually given out to the board members as soon as she has it?
Because there's, because this isn't all of it. We received some directly, so she was building like an overall spreadsheet to show what's committed and what's not been committed.
I know when we started, fire rescues don't get like one hundred and fifty, and then the rest of it was left. Uh, I just don't want to come up to the end of the year and this Northwest Department of Health Network say, y'all didn't use that.
Well, we actually confirm we can roll it forward. So you can't roll it forward forever, but during budget, we're hoping for y'all to be able to totally work through exactly what those, what that budget will be for the, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. But we're not at risk for losing it if we don't spend it all by June, because, isn't that correct? We confirmed we can roll it forward.
Just a little off track.
Because we were, that was a risk until they confirmed we could roll it forward.
When will we actually start? Have we got an idea on the schedule when we start our budget workshops?
The next meeting, y'all, Sarah's gonna request, is it the next meeting or June? The first meeting in June, we're gonna set up all of your workshops.
Good, good. Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two is, uh, this is board approval of change order number three for the Endeavor Convention Center, Miss Daniels?
This is a, a change order in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents for a direct purchase to be made by the county in tax savings. This brings the new contract total to three million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents.
I make a motion, we approve this request, saving money.
Yep, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Other comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. But abstain from voting due to a conflict of interest. Item number twenty-three is board approval of a memorandum of understanding with Chrome Ministries for the purchase of one of the cottages, the Bethune Cottage, Miss Daniels?
Yes, we do have some representatives from Chrome here today. I don't know if y'all wanted to come forward or not.
If you don't mind.
Um, but this is, uh, David Botner with.
David.
The New Orleans Mission.
David Stepp, David Botner.
Yeah.
Good morning, how we doing?
Excellent, thanks for having us.
Absolutely, good morning.
So we've had the pleasure of working with Chrome over the last several months of just trying to identify if there is a space that could, um, help them with their next initiative, which is to expand into the women's ministry. And so, um, they are, we have worked out an arrangement here where they will be purchasing ultimately three of the cottages on Endeavor. Um, and they're starting with one, the Bethune Cottage, and the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, that's based on a broker price opinion. It was really a hundred thousand, but this particular cottage has some additional work that needs to be done on it. I don't know if you want to add anything to it?
No, I, I, I just really want to thank you all for the opportunity. It was interesting, I was at our women's campus in New Orleans, well, in Hammond, and there was a young lady from Marianna, all the way in our, and it's the second one. So if you just want to see the sovereignty of God working on the project, he's already sending women, so we're just really excited to serve the community in another capacity, where we could not have to take them all the way to New Orleans. Although that sounds great, it'd be great to just nurture people right here in your own community. So thank you for considering it.
I will say this, that I've had the opportunity to, uh, to work with Chrome on the old middle school campus. And the fact that you guys have occupied that, improved it and, and kept that from turning into a, what could have turned into an high solar over a period of time, that's very beneficial to our community. And I know the work that you guys are doing there is tremendous, tremendous help to, uh, not only citizens of our community, but to a lot of people throughout the region. So, uh, you guys are certainly to be applauded for the, for the work that you do there.
Well, thank you, thank you for trusting us. And as you know, this facility will be for women, so it'll be more beautiful. Because God always gives greater gifts to you ladies or something.
I got a question.
Mr. Peacock.
So we entered into this agreement, for them to purchase three of these cottages. It doesn't work out with Chrome. What kind of arrangement does Chrome have as an organization to go on forever?
So, yeah, I'd love to speak to that. So the New Orleans Mission's been open for thirty-five years. Our goal is to not come here, and we've only been here for eighteen months, but our goal is to be here for a hundred years. I mean, we, we believe that Jesus Christ is the answer for what these men and women need, and there's no shortage of need for the hurting that are struggling with addiction, mental illness, sexual abuse, human trafficking. It's all through your corridor. I, I don't see ever shortage of need and then resources. We've been very confident and comfortable, even for what we've been able to do, even though we haven't had a ton of support financially from the community. People from New Orleans have believed in the vision. So I, I don't think we're talking about anything like that, but we did discuss, God forbid, that we don't use it. We, whatever we've got invested in the property, we'd simply find somebody to try to carry the vision forth into what, what we're currently doing, so, but, but we're not.
Obviously, it's in the middle of that campus out there and we've got some ideas of what we're gonna be doing, and I'm just concerned that, you know, we're going, we're getting in business with someone that's gonna be around.
Yeah, just so you know, we, we plan to be here for as long as the community exists. I mean, they're beautiful structures, so they're very structurally sound. So I really believe that it, it, we, we will be a hundred-plus years in serving your community well.
But we, we did put in the MOU that we would have the first right of refusal, should they ever, you know, move on for some reason.
Yeah.
And there, there also is included in this agreement a ninety-day due diligence period as well.
Yeah, and we've already done that. We've already had our construction crews look at it, so we're, we're signed and we're gonna be given a check for the first one, the first week of June.
Yes, so how this works is, um, MOU is between us and Chrome, but, uh, the understanding is, following this, there'll be a purchase-sale agreement between us and a private investor that will purchase it on behalf of Chrome, do the modifications and then donate it to Chrome. But our agreement is with Chrome that within a hundred and eighty days, that cottage will be donated to them for the purpose of women's ministry.
And I, you know, I've, I've been in the one that is being remodeled, uh, for another program out there, and those are well-built buildings.
They really are.
They're structurally, the bones of those buildings are, are excellent. So I think it'll turn out to be a very nice facility for you.
Just like Chrome's campus, sir, I mean, the same thing. It's structurally, although it was not being used, it was very structurally sound.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
Yep, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions?
I would like to say one thing.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all for coming here and providing service that was so badly needed.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. For us local parishioners, have y'all established a relationship with them?
It's the best relationships, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm sitting in the back.
Friends right here, and several, going to another church right.
RC two, up in the.
Yeah, so, yes.
Great, great question.
And there will be two more cottages forthcoming, uh, which are identified in your packet. We're just starting with the one, and then when they're ready, we'll move to the next two.
Very good, okay.
How many people will be per cottage?
Fifteen. So we just, forty-five, forty-five women.
Total with the three, once all three are occupied. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Okay, item number twenty-four is a related item. This is board approval of southeastern surveying. This is a task work order for cutting, uh, surveying, I guess, a one-acre parcels.
Yes, we've identified one-acre parcels around all three cottages, and we're asking for task work order in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to go ahead and get that work done for all three of them.
Wait a minute, let me ask a question of yours. The cottages, is there only space in between them that will be, belong to the county? How are we doing that?
There will be space in between that belongs to the county.
Okay, yeah, looks like there's quite a bit of distance between them.
Yes.
Do what?
One of that road between.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. I'll make a motion, we approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the task work order. Any other, Commissioner Branch with a second, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number twenty-five is board approval to reclassify, reclass the approved Utilities Director positions, Daniels.
So during budget, we budgeted for a Utilities Director position after sort of just evaluating the needs of the department as public works as a whole. So public works as utilities, parks, recycling, animal control and maintenance. Um, Mr. Daniels really feels that something that would be more beneficial to him is a broader title, which would be the Public Works Project Manager, that can help him across all of those divisions rather than just utilities. Um, so asking for board approval of that reclassification.
Or REA?
Or REA, yeah.
Don't, have any supervisor responsibilities?
This position, I don't think they would be supervising any.
No, it's not.
So who's gonna run the departments?
Well, we have, um, department supervisors independently, but for, say, utilities specifically, he's more geared to the field work. I need some assistance on more technical asset or technical side of things. So for that, and then likewise in other departments like parks, for instance, we're doing a lot of different grants. we're doing a lot of different grants and working on different projects, boat ramps and that sort of thing, having someone more geared towards the, the, the office work, basically. And I get kind of strung out every now and then.
So, is this, does this involve a pay raise?
Actually, a reduction in what y'all budgeted.
You're cutting his pay, I like it.
This is not, this is an additional position, you all budgeted to have a utilities director hired. We're requesting to change that to a public works project manager, which would actually be
You don't have the person on board. And you'll come back to us before you hire him, right?
Now, this is just basically reclassifying the name of that position.
And it actually will be a lower salary than what we budgeted.
What's that, Red?
It's a lower pay rate because it's not a supervisory position.
And if I may interject, I think we talked about it at our meeting. We need more workers in our utility department so we can segregate the duties. We have one person now that does a lot of different things.
From an auditing standpoint, that'll be beneficial.
Yes. And, and those places, you're picking up more and more clients.
Okay, you've heard the explanation, we got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-six, board approval to set a fee of fifty dollars for utility account searches, Ms. Daniels.
We're requesting to update the fee schedule due to the increase in requests for lien searches with utilities. The request is for a fifty dollar fee per search to be implemented, the structure is currently in place for code enforcement and building department, just kind of coming right in line with that, requesting it to be added to the fee schedule.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, a question from Commissioner Peacock.
Yes. Who does these utility searches?
Me and/or Heather.
But who is requesting?
Oh, lien search companies. So, these companies are paid to get information on properties. I mean, I've heard from probably a dozen different ones at this point, but they are lien search companies, and all they do is do research for either realtors or buyers or brokers or whatever. So as it would typically come in, they would send an address or a parcel number, and they want to know what services are available, how long the count's been extended, and what's the average bill? Do they have any outstanding bills, is it, you know, in good standing with the county?
So this is for business entities that are requesting this information, not our customers.
It could be, it could be a citizen, too.
It could be, but it hasn't been, I mean, everything, and I was talking with community development during the agenda meeting, but this has really increased just this calendar year, I mean, from January to now, we have been bombarded, and we'll get several weeks, some weeks where they're asking for various information.
Well, you know, I'm not opposed to charging these businesses. But if Joe Blow that lives out in Indian Springs wants a check on what's going on with his account, I am opposed to that.
They're, each individual account holder's information is, you know, all they got to do is ask, but these are, these are private companies that are getting paid for this information that when they send a request, which I don't handle it within our office, but not turn it into a public records request, because it's not, you know, you could argue either way.
As long as we're not charging our customers.
No, sir.
Okay.
And, and up to this point, we've not been charging anything for these.
Not from the utilities now, building department and code enforcement, they have what I'm asking for currently.
Okay, you've heard the explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Kenyon, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, thank you, any other questions? Comments, here none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-seven, board approval of the work change directive for the Dillmore Road Project, Ms. Daniels.
Well, this increases for additional materials for water line installation on the Dillmore Road Project.
For the explanation, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign.
So, I want to just get the, I don't know if this needs to be in a motion or just a consensus, but I've only had a few of these requests come in as a work change directive, so these funds will be used from the budgeted contingency of this project. But it is changing, at the end of the day, it'll change the contract price, because that money will not be coming back. So for a work change directive, is it okay with the board for that to be handled? For me, basically, for staff to sign off on as long as it's in the budget contingency? Or do you like to see it come to you in the form of a change order? Because it is changing, you know, it's not, it's not a specific line item, it's not a buzz, or it's not a part of the original scope of work. I just kind of want to see how you guys want to handle, move forward, because I've had, this will be the third, or this is the second one, and then I got called yesterday about a third one on the same project, so just moving forward, however you like to streamline these.
You know, we, and we, Red and I had this conversation, we, we handle contingency change notify, notifications for a number of our clients. And some of our clients prefer to be notified ahead of time, some don't. The reason why we do contingency changes and build a contingency into a, into a project is in the event something comes up that needs to be handled right then, and if it's not handled right then, then it's going to delay construction. We build that contingency in the contract. And you're not really, with that contingency change, you're not changing the contract amount at that point in time. At the end of the project, you would come back in and, and do a change order to, to true up, if you will, but, you know, it's really up to the board.
For instance, I got another call yesterday, we were able to work through it, and we chased rabbits till we got to the bottom of it, but the one I got called about yesterday was on the same project for seventeen thousand dollars. So by our purchasing policy, that's more than I can sign off on anyway, but it is within the project contingency. So, I mean, there's going to be caveats, and I don't know if this is a, a finance issue for, for me to engage on, or, or just how we want to move forward, but to your point, like yesterday, we had an issue running the water line through the Jackson Board case in under the railroad, well, it wouldn't fit, so then we had to change the side of the pipe, different strengths, and it's that, I mean, just within a matter of a day, we completely changed that portion of the project to the two to seventeen thousand dollars. So we got that one worked out, but those are the types of things that could come up.
I would think that if it stays within the contract amount, I don't have a problem, because you need to keep the project rolling, sometimes it'll cost more if they have to wait two or three days and then start back up. With staff taking care of it, I don't have a problem with that, but you're going to be spending a sack full of money. I, I think we need to know about it, and also the back, these companies need, when they bid, they need to be careful of what they've bid and done, and forget all of these change orders.
Well, you know, if, if the plans and specifications are, you know, are done the right way, what's included in the plans and spec should be very clear, and what's not included should be
Well, but his situation, the wrong size pie, I don't know who that calls.
And it's a little more complicated than that, but that's where I got to, and I said, why should every state cost us seventeen thousand dollars, no, let's go to the next option. I mean, we're, we're cognizant of the funds that are being spent.
But the only problem from the finance side was when it exceeds what they can authorize without your approval, y'all may, and that may be a legal question, y'all need to address that, like in this instance, it was seventeen thousand dollars. If he'd had to spend that, that's above the fifteen or the fourteen, nine ninety-nine. So, I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but that, that would be something that I hope my folks would catch and say, hey, wait a minute, Red authorized this, he's only good up to fourteen nine ninety-nine. Now, that might just be brought to you guys and retroactively approved, but I think you need to have some kind of process.
Well, I think it should come before us, but it could be retroactively approved. You know, we don't want to hold up a project like they got going now, waiting for a board meeting that's going to happen two weeks from now. That's where I'm at.
In some cases, with some of our clients, they only meet one time a month, so it
Well, the other thing, too, is you could get ahold of the chairman and discuss it with the chairman.
Well, and the airport, too. At the end of the project, when we do the closeout, the change, the true change orders that will be approved will have to add up to whatever the contract price is. This is truly just a continuation of the project, so option two, or C, whatever. So it was two, three weeks, and it don't cost additional money for seventeen thousand, we can do it Saturday. But we were able to go rent, you know, kudos to him, DHM, found a completely different option, and we're moving right along at no money and no time, that's not always going to be the case.
Like, what I'm hearing the board say, I think, is that if it's a contingency changes, it's within that contingency, go, go ahead, you, whoever needs to make that decision, make that decision to approve it, but then at next available meeting, at least a process of what that contingency change was. And, and if it, if it exceeds the, the threshold amount of what that particular person can approve, then we can approve it retroactively.
Yeah, but I think if it's going to exceed, they need to reach out to the chairman.
Yeah, and just reach out to me as the chairman, or whoever the chairman is.
Whoever the chairman is, if you reach out to the chairman and get their blessing, and then bring it to the board. At least we got some say.
Some knowledge, anybody?
Yeah.
Clay, does that sound like a?
Sounds like we're playing. Thanks, I'm sorry to
No problem. Yeah, we, we discussed that and got some direction on that. Item number twenty-eight, board approval of water management grant, seventeen oh sixty-one amendment six.
Yes, this covers additional funding for phase one and two construction and associated project management, as well as grant bidding for phase three A.
No move, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock? Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions?
And that's on Blue Springs Road, sorry, that's not in the detail.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-nine, request board approval of Blue Springs Road Sewer Project Amendment Number Three, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, the purpose of this work authorization amendment is to revise the agreement between Alday Howell Engineering and the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners dated five sixteen twenty-three. It's to be in line with the amended agreement, which you previously approved, between Northwest Florida Water Management District.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number thirty, board approval of Blue Springs Phase Two Work Authorization Amendment Two, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this also is to be in line with the amended agreement.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Item thirty-one.
I'd like to motion to adjourn for about five minutes.
Got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Peacock to adjourn for five minutes, second from Commissioner McKinney, so move.
I'll be back.
We'll reconvene this meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, and if I'm correct, I think we left off completing item thirty and getting ready to address item thirty-one, which is board approval of Blue Springs Sewer Phase Three A Work Authorization, Ms. Daniel.
Yes, this is to authorize Alday Howell to prepare construction plans, bid documents and contractor selection for the extension of the county's central sewer collection and transmission system down Blue Springs Road for Phase Three A.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. All right, moving down to the last item on the page, tax deed certificates, Ms. Daniels.
So we met with staff and Commissioner Peacock yesterday on this matter, and looked at a map with the tax certificates that are seven years out. And we actually had Kevin Stanland, he did us a map, which we appreciate very much, so that we could just sort of visually see where they are around the county. And so what we came up with is to propose that we apply for five, which is very minimal, but just to start and just see how the process works and how it goes in the Compass Lake and the Hills area that are all within reach to power. So either off of NorTech or Lake Point Road, so we still need to do a little due diligence on which five, so just asking for the board's leeway for us to sort of sort through which are buildable lots, you know, those kinds of factors, but up to five in Compass Lake and Hills that are off of NorTech or Lake Point.
Yeah, and how, how many properties were they, if you just estimated?
Total.
That would be kind of followed within the same category that might be.
Well. Uh, that would fall in the category of what I just said.
Yeah, kind of.
Um, I don't know, but there were quite a few within.
Two hundred more?
No, I think he meant that would fall into the category of near power.
Right, it would, yeah.
How many or certificates do you have down there?
We have, we have many, I think Mary Pearl brought that before y'all before, but we did have an individual company that bought around four hundred or so of those county certificates. Not the ones that were suffering expiration, um, but some eighteen's and forward, but we currently have, um, over a thousand certificates. And that could be multiple certificates on the same property, um, that are from twenty tax year twenty seventeen and forward. Um, we do have still around three hundred and sixty-two that will be expiring June first.
And those are the ones y'all were looking at, correct, Rhonda?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll just need to make sure we get those applications made before June first.
I mean, you don't have.
There's three hundred and sixty-two that will be expiring if we don't force tax deeds on those. But keeping in mind that those properties probably have an eighteen certificate and an eighteen certificate on up. But we can look at those.
You said someone bought four hundred dollars?
It was like four hundred and thirty-seven was a company.
Do you know the dollar value?
I don't, not right off, I can get that, but I don't.
Okay, well, we could use that, some of that money, the funds, the ones we're taking.
Right.
Yeah.
It's actually good.
When did they do it? It was just this?
This week.
April, no, it was in, it was in April.
It's in April?
I, I thought.
Or it could have been, I'm sorry, that when they first contacted us, it was in April, I think we processed them in May.
Mary, Mary Carol.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when Mary Carol was here, it had not quite happened at that point.
Right, and it, it was in the making that we just haven't completed it yet, but, yeah.
Okay, so do you need that in the form of a motion to move forward with that direction?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the stat, the list that staff produces containing five, uh, properties.
Properties.
To, that we will be purchasing the tax deed, is it deed or certificate we get them?
If you, you know, you, they have to go through the same process, you apply for the tax certificate, which gets the ball rolling to have a tax deed sale. You may not wind up with five properties.
But some.
Gets pushed to sale, it's sold, action's not to go without steps anymore, it's done, um, electronically, you bid on it. So the county would apply for the tax deed.
Deed.
Applications, you have to sell, and you have to pay off the previous, which we don't, we don't know those anyhow.
Well, well, but in this case, the county will not have to apply, I mean, would, excuse me, will not have to pay off any other, if there's, say a property has three county certificates and two individual certificates. All the county has to pay is the application fees and title search fees to us and your fees. They don't have to redeem any other certificates on this property, right?
So you, you would apply for the tax deed and go through the process, it gets the title search, it comes to us, we know five of the surrounding, all that kind of stuff. And then it goes for sale, doesn't mean that you're gonna wind up with those properties.
Right.
That anybody can bid on.
Right.
But the main goal is to get them off the tax roll.
Right.
So when you force them to sell, that's either gonna make the property owner pay, or they lose the property, and then it would go to the county.
Exactly.
Even though the taxes are falling off?
Yes.
We still have to go through a tax deed sale.
Yes.
Kind of a convoluted system, but, but that's my motion.
So you're gonna pursue the tax deed sale on five properties that they.
That's right, that they are done.
That we may or may not end up with.
Right, just gets the.
And we'll, we'll come back later with the program, if we get them, how we're going to dispose on.
And, and if you don't get them, you'll get paid back all your expenses, so then if you wanna do buy more.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's a, it's a really no lose, right? I mean, we either get the people to pay their taxes or the county gets more property.
Got a motion, and a second from Commissioner, uh, motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, that same, same sign, that motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we leave this, we'll, Lenny, you want to discuss? What we talked about on the other properties, yeah, surplus properties.
So just as an update, the board approved for us to deal with the surplus lands a while back. And so, uh, Lindsay has done a excellent job working with Rhett to get those properties out, uh, to see if anyone would bid on those, and we got no bidders. So we were kind of regrouping on maybe why, um, maybe looking at that a little bit different way, one of the suggestions was, uh, Cisther Peacock, that, you know, if we offer those for people who want to build a home, that we would give the property away if they, you know, if they're in a work, uh, workforce, you know, police, teachers, those sorts of things, and that'd be a whole program we would bring back to you, uh, but maybe trying to find a different way to market some of those properties. And then the other idea is to just, uh, work with Michelle on how to, um, obtain a Realtor if we have to do an RFQ or, or whatever, and just putting those properties on the market.
Working with, I, I go through an RFQ.
We got properties sitting around, no one knows about it.
Right.
Uh, the Realtors might know about it, they may not know they're for sale.
I will say, I, I personally think we should just try that route and see how we do with just selling the properties. Uh, because, you know, the program sounds good in theory, but that's a lot of tracking, verifying, and that's a, that's a whole thing to manage to take the property back if they don't, um, build within a certain amount of time, you know, it's just, you know, if the goal is to get them on the tax rolls, just selling them is the easiest way to do that.
So you're talking about actually going out for an RFQ to engage a Realtor?
Mm-hmm, is that what you wanted to do?
So before we do that, you all have to adopt, um, a, a policy or procedure for the disposition of real property. Because ordinarily, you're bound by, um, chapter one twenty-five, which requires you to put these properties off for bid. There are a couple of exceptions to that public bid process, one is for, um, economic development, the other is for affordable housing. Um, but the statute does authorize the county to adopt its own policy, so we need to put that policy in place before we proceed with retaining a kind of professional.
That, that policy would basically deal specifically with surplus properties if we wanted to do.
It, it could deal with surplus, it could do with.
Any property.
Yeah, because right now the, the process is to, when we want to dispose of property, to declare it surplus, or it's either coming in, the deal's coming in under an economic development exception or affordable housing.
What, do we wanna direct staff to come up with that policy so that we can move forward with trying to get some of that property on tax rolls?
And I have some policies I've developed for other communities that I'm happy to share with Sarah.
I'll like that motion.
And motion is basically direct staff to come up with a policy.
Policy pertaining to disposal of, uh, surplus property or whatever, any property that we want to get rid of.
Yeah, we got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same signs, that motion carries unanimously. Item number thirty-three is, uh, a board approval to set an executive session for the, uh, Baker versus Jackson County, uh.
Yes, May twenty-eighth at four thirty P M. Y'all, this is a reminder, y'all have a special meeting that day at five o'clock to talk about the comp plan, I believe. Um, so just asking right ahead of that to have an executive session.
On May twenty-eighth.
So move.
So.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, item number thirty-four is board approval of a, uh, Opportunity Florida Letter of Commitment, Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, this is, uh, something we do annually, just a letter of support from the board, um, and stating that we intend to pay our twenty-four, twenty-five dues, uh, that we support Opportunity Florida and their organization and their mission to create jobs and improve the economic outlook of our area.
Good, word of explanation, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Item number thirty-five, which was added, uh, by Ms. Daniels, is board approval of the, uh, maintenance and light away control mounts, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, uh, the Florida, uh, D O T has requested board review and signature of this, uh, for Prim Avenue of our Holmes Creek Bridge project.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, I believe that concludes our, uh, uh, regular agenda, with that being said, um, Michelle, anything from legal counsel?
I don't think so.
Okay, very good, Ms. Daniels, anything else?
I just have a couple of things, um, first of all, did want to invite Johnny Paget up to the podium really briefly. Um, as previously mentioned, Chief, you've come on. Um, he is, uh, going to be our community paramedic, and he's running, um, the program, and I wanted to just give him a chance to share kind of what you've already been up to the last couple of months.
So it's about two months into it, it's been very busy. Today, we, y'all approved the MOUs, which is gonna allow us to take that next step and actually start advertising the program. Um, we've got the website laid out, um, Fred's helping us with that, so once, and Mary, I'm sorry, yes, Mary. Um, once that's going, there'll be QR codes we're gonna create so that people can just scan that, it'll bring them to the page, do the information about it. Also, um, if they want more information, it'll, it'll dump their information in an email so we can follow back up with them. Um, we've ordered Narcan for, um, from the Heroes Program that came in last week, so we've got that in place, um. The MOUs, Narcan, we've got most of the equipment in, uh, now, so, uh, we're looking at a few other things, we've got some people learning will come in and, and show us, uh, some different, some, some portable labs, some ultrasound and stuff like that, point of care, point of care for that stuff. So a lot, a lot of stuff's still moving, but we're almost to the point where you should start seeing something from us, where it, it'll be on the website, it will be out in the public. Our crews will actually start when they go out to, and see, see someone on a nine-one-one call, and they think that they will be a good fit for the program. They'll be able to click a button on their computer program when they finish their, their report, and it will automatically refer them to me, so, um, and then I will follow up with that patient.
We've responded to, uh, in the last month for our operations as well. Um, Johnny has personally, um, improvised materials, even though we don't have a lot of our MOUs and MOAs set up yet. Um, but programs we do know, we've shared that information with patients and their families. Um, three of the four have family members present, one did not. Take time to inform those patients. Um, working with the hospital, the hospital brought on a, at the same time unrelated to this, a care navigator position in case management department. Um, that does the follow-ups, um, but they're not out in the field. Um, so Johnny has, oh, met this person in case management, we're working as a collaborative team to track those patients that are being discharged, that are identified as high risk. And then we threw in the part about overdose, whether it's accidental or intentional, um, that we can follow those patients as well, so. That came at a really good time, the hospital had budgeted this position, it was a new position that they previously didn't have, so, um, we are working with those, uh, partners closely, and we're able to share with these MOAs, um, patient data, HIPAA compliant data, patient privacy data. So we're able to share it bi-directionally from our program to the hospital and get referred in to PanCare and these other organizations. Uh, we've met with life management, um, they do have a twenty-four hour mobile response team, um, have representatives that live in this county, um, that respond on that team. And so we are developing an MOA to utilize that team as well. Um, that will be forthcoming, as well as the faith-based organizations, um, you know, they have a huge potential like we see in the mercy management. Um, and referring in our faith-based communities across, so we're establishing meetings and connections with them. Keep evolving the board, so.
Uh, true, truly is kind of a collaborative effort to, to address these issues among several different agencies and organizations. Where, where were you, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask Chief if he could share a little bit about Johnny's background and where he comes from.
Yeah, it's Johnny, born, raised in Phoenix Springs and, uh, worked for Walton County Fire, Walton County Emergency Medical Services before, County Fire Rescue began in the nineties. And, uh, he retired as the title of Assistant Chief for Walton County Fire Rescue. And moved into the, uh, Black Paramedic career, um, and spent many years at Air Heart locally at our base, um, and not a stranger in Jackson County, he flew in that base, but also worked as a alternate paramedic uh, from the nineties, um, different points in Fire Rescue's career here. Um, from there, he was the business, regional business manager for Air Methods, and then oversaw EMS coordination and, uh, emergency management at, well, Walton Beach Medical Center under H C A. It's Level Two trauma center in Oakliss County, um, so, and we're happy to have him back here. He's got a wealth of knowledge and experience, and so.
Yeah, he'd definitely be a, an asset in Jackson County, especially as we move forward with trying to, uh, address some of, of the issues that we'll be addressing. Where would you actually be housed at?
I'm at the station one. Station.
Okay, there you go, okay.
You got plenty of work.
Yeah, welcome aboard, we look forward to.
We do wanna totally base individually with commissioners, um, we know you have constituents that we probably don't know about, so on an individual basis, um, we will get those materials um, to y'all, and, uh, y'all might know some folks in your area that we can reach out to as well, so we'll definitely set that up.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good luck, we're excited for coming on board, yeah.
Thank you. Um, also just wanted to brief the board that, uh, Commissioner Donifor was with us, but we had a really great, uh, opportunity last week with, uh, Florida Commerce. So, um, great, Florida's great northwest, uh, put together a site visit with the Secretary Alex Kelly of, uh, Florida Commerce and several of his team members, and they toured the entire, uh, northwest region of Florida. Um, they stopped at Endeavor and spent about forty-five minutes allowing us to take them on a short bus tour, um, made sure to drive them straight down Poozer Road. Um, and so it was a really, really great meeting, and I think truly was impactful for them to visually see all that we have going on out there. And so, um, just wanted to brief you all on that.
I concur with what you just said, I think it was, uh, a very positive, uh, visit, and hopefully we'll pay, pay dividends as we, you know, continue to move forward with finding, uh, funding for, for a lot of things we're trying to do out there, so very, very impactful.
And, uh, because we just approved the Opportunity Florida letter, just wanted to say they were a huge part of putting that together, and they really are a resource that sometimes we don't always see until things like that, uh, they're making the connections and helping us, uh, put together, uh, different visits like that. And then also just wanted to officially congratulate Mary Smith, she is our official public communications officer, no longer interim, and I'm really glad to have her. That's all I have, oh, no, I'm sorry, one more thing. So we have, um, some T-shirts up in the lobby that, um, we just cannot sell because they're too small apparently, um, we've got a little, been a little heavy on the smaller sizes. And so, um, we would like the board to approve that we offer those T-shirts to employees for a limited time, maybe the next thirty, sixty days, uh, for five dollars. Uh, so they may have children or whoever they could purchase them for, um, and then after that, we would like to dispose of those to the library summer program and next up kids program.
Well, it certainly won't fit any of us, so. Where are you gonna take it to?
I'll have to give it away.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to go along with that, uh, recommendation, second from Commissioner Branch, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all of it, same sign, motion carries unanimously, is that it?
That's it.
Sure?
I'm sure.
Commissioner Peacock.
What's the latest on the budget?
We are working on it, uh, Sarah has sent out the.
Note. From the state, has the governor signed off on everything?
No, he has not, not to, not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge either.
I, I hadn't heard anything either.
Can't be a little slower.
Um. I think it was our last meeting, we talked about the, giving the employees the fifth of July off. And it occurred to me with some of these rainy days that, uh, And it occurred to me with some of these rainy days that, uh, you know, our, a lot of our motor grader operators will be gone for well over a week. And invariably around the fourth of the holidays is when we see these big rains. Is there any contingency to get someone out to take care of these roads that are washing out and everything? Or do y'all need approval from us ahead of time so that you can bring somebody out on overtime if needed?
We could do it either way. The issue we run into with holiday week specifically is not working the forty to get the overtime, so that has to be dealt with on case by case. But if that was to occur, we offer up overtime or as on a volunteer basis, so.
Well, I know you can't force them to work.
Right, so.
Some of them care enough about the roads, they'll get out there and.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have four or five as well, and they go whenever, however long, but not. Couple others need a little encouragement, but if that's something y'all want to go ahead and just tell us to make it happen, we can make sure to do it.
Well, I make a motion that we re-approve the overtime if needed. And they, they'll have to determine that.
And I will say that, uh, and like you said, that the employees at Roden Bridge, when, when there are situations like that that occur, they, they're very good about coming out and, and doing the extra effort to make sure the roads are, are passable anyway. So between the two, I think we would be okay.
Yes, sir.
So with your motion is.
That was a motion to pre-approve them saying, you know, expend funds on overtime if, if needed.
Yeah, in, in whatever capacity is necessary.
Cause I know in the past, they've had to come back to the board and ask for approval and everything.
If I could just clarify, you, what you mean is that, um, they will earn overtime even if they are having a holiday? That's really what the issue is, we can authorize the overtime, but what you're saying is they get to earn overtime even if they were off for the holiday?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought you meant, but wanna make sure for the record.
Is, is that universal, or is that just for the fourth of July week?
Well, I was only speaking of the fourth of July, but it, it's probably a good idea to just make it.
I'd say, I'd really, truly do it on a case-by-case basis.
That's why I'm, I leave my motion out of it.
Okay, so that's your motion. Commissioner McKenna seconded it.
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Redd? What about Lake Seminole and the Mill Pond? Have you heard anything?
I don't deal with lake at all, except for our public access points. I don't do anything with Core or.
You haven't talked to the Core, you know they're doing the big test over there.
No, sir. Only one little bit, you told me, I'll be linked to the fence.
Okay.
Try to leave the Mill Pond to state, which they are planning to do additional treatments as early as later this month, their first part of June. With the Priscilla Core that was treated, uh, the last treatment, I don't remember when it was now. So they've got more material and more order, the new schedule, the contractor to come in, like I said, towards the end of the month, the first part of June.
Okay. The recreation equipment for Cypress Park, you gonna get that installed next week?
We'll have a good start on it by next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
That's it.
Commissioner Branch?
One thing I have is, uh, where we at with the grass cut? I'm getting, I'm starting to get calls about.
The grass cut? The right-of-way? So they're working on, um, should be getting into D four now, they come through Devilwood the last couple of weeks. They went to Sneed's on the, I'll say the inside of ninety, come back up, should be going across into probably Grand Ridge, somewhere in that ballpark.
They're at Reddick and, uh, Blue Springs.
There you go.
They gotta do Blue Springs coming to seventy-one.
Last week I was behind a school bus, and a little child got off. And that was the last time I saw a child, that she got on up in the yard. You couldn't see her.
Right.
And I said, no, son's got the hill here now.
Where was that at?
That was up down past my house. It was on, it was on Birchwood.
On Birchwood, okay.
It's, people's already started mowing it themselves, man. You know, and.
We had talked about doing a mass cutting, uh, you know, was that discussed here?
No. What, I think the mass cutting you're referring to are limbs.
Left three, right.
That's gonna be a multi-million dollar contract.
Yeah.
How many, how many do we have running now?
Five. As of last week, we started with four, and we've got one added, um, so they're picking up steam. They're doing around twelve, thirteen miles a day right now.
I, I started, I got a call last night about it, my lady, she was upset about it.
Last few years, we were averaging about eight or nine, so we're doing more now with five than we were doing the last three years with eight.
How, how long does it take us to get all, do one complete cycle?
Right now, we'll probably have about two more weeks, started in April, so the first one's gonna run two months. Um, then it'll start clicking down, our goal is six, seven weeks per cycle.
Seven weeks? And we, we can do a pretty good job, from what I can tell, of hitting all of those roads.
And it's the most complete cycle that's been done in seven years. Just going by the road list that gets submitted by the, the mowers themselves. So they do, they do a mow book, just like the grader, do a grader book, they come in, um, every other Wednesday, and they go into the, um, pub works. So we can pull each road, and it's, um, we're way more efficient now than we have been.
Yeah. Anything else?
Are we still recruiting mower operators?
Yeah, I mean, just like any other position, but yeah.
We just, we just.
We wouldn't pick one over another, we need mowers, we need brush cutters, we need graders. We just need, we need help.
Birchwood. And even D, D four. I already need to cut the D four, tissue?
Have they, um, bits and pieces over around Sneed's, yeah.
No, they were, they was north of the ninety, so.
And where are we at with the MS for certification, number correction officer, are getting boy MS?
I've got, uh. Cool. So, uh, they're gonna have another class, uh, not recertification, it's a certification class. Trying to get some more people certified, and they need to be turned in by pride and school stuff.
Yeah, cause we're finding a lot of time, especially my area, there's like hotspots, you know, on the different roads, you know, you got the little branches, whatever you wanna call these things, they taking the road over. You know, just coming in pass, but they meet up a field.
Anything else?
I'm good.
I'm happy.
Mr. McKenna? There you go. Okay. Anything, anybody from anybody in the audience? Mr. McCoy, come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, I'm Troy, Troy McFord, and I was interested, trying to find out if we got anything done, uh, on the place out here of mine. And then we had a, we were supposed to talk about the money situation, we were not knowing much about it, how much it was going to, the cost to put it upside the road, to set it down there in that ditch. And someone was supposed to get that figured out for us, and I hadn't heard anything from it.
We, we actually had directed, uh, Mr. Redd Daniels to get with the all-day haul. Have y'all been able to put some, some more finite numbers together for that, as far as what the overall cost? And what the actual scope of work would involve?
We kind of proceeded with it, I mean, um, you had mentioned that you'd gotten a letter from DEP, and we're kind of waiting to see what was gonna happen with the letter from DEP, what needed to be done, um, to address kind of some of that stuff. But we can definitely move forward with it.
So you got, you got, Troy, you got a letter from DEP?
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think that's, I don't think that's got anything to do with the part we're trying to get in line, but, but, yeah, the dirt we was putting in and all out there. That, uh, they come and looked at it, and, and a man and a woman, and we mail them out there, and said it was, uh, okay. And I said, what to do, she goes, go ahead, what you do, you know, we're putting the dirt and everything all in there, and if anything changes, I'll let you know. About, I guess a couple of weeks later, so I got a letter, no, didn't, he called me, and, uh, and told me, if, if we wanted to quit putting any more dirt in there right now. Said, I'll put more in there now until I get you a permit, or either I'll send you a, a letter or something where you can start back and finish the job. And that's, and that's been, what, a couple of weeks, two weeks, three weeks, I hadn't heard anything from.
So, so that was about what, the, the filling operation?
Yeah, filling.
That, that didn't really have anything to do with the sewer or the lift station, I would just.
Right, that ain't got it.
So that, does that have anything to do with? What he's asking us to potentially do?
No, I just.
Other than.
Like for, for him to come in and meet Joseph and Travis about what, well, Joseph mostly about the moving, if what it would actually help with, or could benefit property, um, in, in. So anyways, I was kind of put on hold a couple of weeks back on that. There's been a couple of people we've kind of been consulting with on top of Mr. employee himself, but anyways, we'll meet, I'll meet back with you and, um, look at what we need to do about how you want, kind of wanting to lay that out and do it.
I just, what I thought to do was, we were gonna do, whatever it costs to put it down everywhere y'all gonna put it at, I don't even know what, cause what would be the difference in that and putting it up here? You know, and I think it would be cheaper to put it up here on straight, a little straight line, instead of going all down in that model. And also, I got with the county, and, and on my backside of the property up there, where it, it's approved for me to put twelve units per acre up on the back top side. Which that, I could put a hundred and eighty units up there on the top of that hill, if I did, and then y'all would get all the service out of it, you know, the sewer and the water and everything, that bring a lot of money into the county. And on the front part there, where you got that line, and it's got to be blocked off on that front right there, I got about four acres, three and a half, four acres there, where I could put that plaza across there I wanna put. But now, I ask people to look at it, so I don't have enough room to do that, but you got thirty, thirty-four foot, where the county's got easement, then you, then I can't get fifteen foot of that, and that's the time I try to build a building, well, I'm out in a ninety. So you know where to park and then, so it's got that whole front, all of my land actually just gone zap on kind of that line getting in there, true. And that's the reason I want to see if we can get it up there, put it on top, I think it'd be cheaper, but it's checked out, and, uh, and more feasible, I wanted to go down there, where the line's been giving trouble busting three or four places in that ditch up and down there. Over the last, what, couple of years, two, three years, and they had to, you know, have crews of people that are fixing them, and it's because of that, well, it puts so much pressure, putting, pushing water uphill, and there's new one gonna put in there that say a bigger, better pump. You gonna put a bigger, better pump, something new on something old when it's already giving trouble? Well, the only thing about business, you ask it for more trouble, you know, so if you're gonna put more pressure on them lines, go have more leaks. And so, you, you get away with all that, and then, then it, besides, I, I was told, and I thought it was my fault, but I didn't know nothing about that. They had two fives for water going into the river down there, and it's two, uh, one for twenty thousand and one for twenty-five thousand. That eliminate all that, cause you ain't gonna be down there for wherever and all that either. You know, plus the people working on it or whatever it is down there, but anytime you put a new piece of equipment on something old like that, that's bigger, and gonna put more pressure on it, when you already have any pressure, uh, trouble with it, you know, it don't make good sense, you know.
Are we replacing all of those lines as part of this project, or are we not? No? No?
Yeah, they were, but they leak it, that, you know, that y'all have worked on them, fixed them three or four times out there, about there and fixed them, you know, so, and you gonna put something new with more pressure on it, you know, it don't make it, just to me, you're not a customer, we don't mean a whole lot.
Can you kind of send, at least me, I like to see what that looks like on paper, as far as what we're doing and what he, what Troy's talking about doing? Is there a way of putting that on?
That's what we're doing all the time, waiting to see what's happening.
The, the changing of, the relocating of the forest maintenance, where a lot of the additional cost comes in, and then the three gravities that come into the existing. So with the difference, I mean, you keep saying, well, if you gonna put it here, just move here and save money, it's really not, there's a lot of infrastructure that has to be relocated to make the, where he wants it work. I mean, we're still three, five hundred thousand dollars in addition to what we already got budgeted to spend for the rehab wayside. So my question to the board would be, how much is the county willing to spend to draft up bid documents and put out for bid to see how much it's actually gonna cost? Cause even just the, the planning part of it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars before you ever get construction.
Well, and I'd like to, I mean, uh, uh, the reason I'd like for you to meet with Joseph to, to do a project feasibility study, because the, the ditch there is wet. You've got a, a wetland setback that's more than a width to the easement that's already there, so the easement's not, like, preventing him from doing any kind of additional construction. Does that make sense?
The wetland mostly, but y'all, y'all don't own a wetland there. There's a whole layout, if, if I got to fix that, so that's all the, uh, top of there. There, this is where it comes in from the wet, wetland here. I don't know which way, you can see it the best, the ninety or what, that's that way there, but see, here's your ditch coming in here, and it goes up here, then turns, it comes down. Here, and your wetlands on this side, it ain't on this side over here, well, you see where they got it rode in, that's where they're working, use all of that, and over here, it's commercial, I can use this. Cause the line goes up there, the ditch, that's the line, and here it goes right down to the pole, where it's at, then goes down here, my property goes on out there.
And Troy, Troy.
Then you going straight out of the road, anyhow, you leaving the road here, ninety, you going down here and making all this loop, and then you going right back to ninety at the same stop.
Right.
And there, there's a man over already there, there's a man over already here. All you got to do is put this in between here, it puts a whale right there. I, I don't.
So there's a lot of things going on, the ditch itself is considered wet, you, you understand what I'm saying? I'm not saying that there's like a big wetland area, the ditch itself is a wetland, and from that wetland, there is a specific wet, from that ditch, there's a specific wetland setback that you can't develop, and that easement is within that setback with where the existing utilities are. Something else too is where the wet well is right now, and the adjacent manhole, that manhole services sewer to the other side of the ditch already. So there's already utility availability at that location. If we move it, we, we then have to lower the depth of the wet well to be able to grab the prongs where it's already at, certain sewer availability all the way back out to the right wing, which is a couple hundred more feet, adds to more depth, and the wet well's already at the max depth that it is. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are going in, into just moving it out, it's not just relocate pipes. So I mean, personally, I think that that would devalue the property on the backside by eliminating the utility services that are already available to it, but that's what I'd like to get a project.
That's the service you're talking about, is that one of the reasons that line's in there, the Chris Harris, let them put that line in there, and then charge, no charge, all the charge was from where y'all got the whale thing out now, run them two, there's water already run across, and that sewer, there's a man over there. That was put there, that's all he got out of the deal from letting them do that. So if you go there and do it, and don't do it up here, for these last, uh, what would be twenty-eight years, you've got all that running there for free, it hasn't cost nothing, nobody.
Right, but, but us moving the wet well would eliminate all that service that's already there. So I mean, that's what I'd like to have, you know, somebody sit down and do a feasibility study to kind of show you what all's gonna happen.
Troy, can you, can you get with Eric and Joseph and, and y'all, get, let, let them explain what they see as the challenges, and let you explain the, 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 the proposed routing that you're talking about? Cause I mean, we can't see what it is you're, you're talking about, I have, I have no idea really what, whether it's feasible or whether it's not feasible, but I think if y'all can get together, uh, you know, maybe, maybe you can understand what Eric's saying, and Eric can maybe better understand what you're saying.
All, all the rest of them, I don't, ninety, everything going out that way, going across, uh, the Mill Pond, got a pipe and all outside, everything right beside the road. Oh, you know, right beside ninety, by where you go, man, those all up and down, up just around the church, all right there, when they got down here, they zip down through there, I don't know whether they wanted the ditch there for a runoff or what they wanted, but, for, why didn't go, keep going straight like everywhere else? I don't understand.
I have no idea.
Wayside park there back then.
Yeah, it was a wayside park, and I don't, I don't know why it was done there. Yeah, it was a Wayside Park there, I don't, I don't know why it was done that way.
Uh, next question, uh, Mr. McCoy, well, I, I, and I met him out there, and what I understood from him, there's a line coming off of highway ninety down to that pump, and then it comes back up the highway ninety.
Yes, that's correct.
I understand, what I'm hearing from you is there's another pipe coming in somewhere in between them two, that's a gravity line down that gets to that pump, and it pumps it on, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the gravity all comes to the wet well, which is the lift station, and then picks it up and pumps it back to.
So it's not just one main line coming to that pump and then coming back up to ninety?
No, there's, there's another one that he's talking about that's outside the right of way, within the easement, but they all come gravity down to that, so when we move the pump, we then have to get everything that was gravitying there.
Back to their location.
New pump at the new location, so it's not as easy to just pick it up and retype.
Think Mr. McCoy, I, I understand, and maybe he don't know about that other, that what I hear you say, he thinking it's like one pipe coming down there and then coming back to ninety, what he want to do is keep all them straight in line, but then, if you do that, you knocking off and services are lit, I mean, it's like it gotta be a lift station there.
There has to be a lift station there, yes.
But it don't have to be down there, it can be, it can be moved before you want it up down.
Right, so if we.
It's a matter of money.
If we move it up to the road, he, he.
But it's safe, it's safe.
Sounds to me like.
Still, half of me.
Move out, really, still gonna have a lift station there, because of the gravity, so.
If, if we move it up to the road, we can get the gravity that's along the road and all your other services, what would happen is, he would no longer have service to his back parcel.
That's right. So. That's the only difference, although, although it could be run from that, that uh, whale there, that cross there, still cross from the other side.
No, if, if we move it up, we won't have, it won't be deep enough to gravity.
To gravity.
To continue gravity back to the new wet well.
Something back here about it.
That's right, you'd have to end up, want, out of your own pocket, your own development, putting in your own lift station and pump it to this lift station, you see, so I mean, every, for, you know, for every action, there's equal opposite reaction, it might be more than what is eas- as easy to just look at on a piece of paper and see right now, until you get into full blown design, but I didn't already have a concept, I kind of helped out with, um, the realtor of the property, and I had to kind of talk to you about a little bit, but we'll, um, we'll go back and look at all the options that you have for it and go from there, but I don't, I mean, I don't mind putting together a concept or any of that kind of stuff, but I think, uh, you did, it was very, um, informative.
I know we got a grant to do one job down there, what would it take if I were moved up, that, if it'd be any money difference, or, or, or if they all, whatever, what the difference would be?
That's the question I had shortly.
Right.
And he's, and he's, he's saying, I'm not calling it, costing the money for the county, which the state's paying for, and everything, uh, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, and what you saying, all right, but I got a piece of property sitting there, that's worth over a million dollars, and that's the whole, y'all got the whole front of it up, from the woods up where that is, so it goes into, there's a land there, you got the whole thing blocked right there, you know, so I'm losing, so I'm losing a million dollars or more there than that, and, and you said, maybe it's all about, don't cost us a, a three hundred thousand or something, it's, it's according what shoes you wear, oh yeah, that's how it fits.
I'm thinking that difference, that difference, if it's a little difference, not too much, not maybe, difference in, if you get something built out there, the tax is gonna be a lot more, see.
Oh, yeah.
Be like.
You gonna get all the sewer, all the tax for it.
Yeah.
All the water, all that, it'd be, you see, you'll get that, not now, they get it for a hundred years from now, you know, we all dead and young, who's ours, still be paying property taxes, the whole nine yards of all that.
Big county, wouldn't?
Yeah, county beginning, yeah, 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 I appreciate that, sorry.
Okay, well, let, look at it a little bit closer to see, I, I would suggest that you get with Eric and or Joseph or both of them.
I talked to him about it and everything, boy, and I didn't wanna go trying to get ahead, you know?
Right.
In something that maybe y'all was doing, or, or they was doing, you know, I just wanted to get it done, anyway possible, cause.
Well, I, I think what I'd like to know is, you know, what additional dollars it's gonna cost the county to do what you're asking to do?
Right, is it gonna cost more, or is it gonna cost less?
Right, exactly.
You know what difference it'll cost, I give, give a surprise while that's gonna cost, and you know, is it gonna be more or less, or, you know, one other line, if it's run from there, there's two lines that's coming in there, well, there's one main line, and there's another one, I guess, maybe coming across the road, or cherished something over, I don't know where it comes from, but, you know, it'll fit in right with the rest of it, just like it goes into the bottom right there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Say, if they will it wait, you know.
But with, with that way comes the cost, and you know, that's what we're trying to find out is, you know, what, whether, if it would save dollars, then I would definitely say that we need to do it. But I, I, I'm kind of, from what I'm hearing, I don't think it's gonna save dollars, I think it's gonna cost a lot of extra money.
Well, I hear that too, but I don't agree with it, but, um.
Hopefully it wouldn't be much difference.
Yeah.
Hopefully it wouldn't be much.
It wouldn't be much, that's the worst.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, well, does that, anybody else got anything, needs to come to our attention?